I'd like to call this meeting to order please, sorry for delay, if you please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to their public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening everybody, we'd like to start tonight's meeting with a recognition of Anne Marie Matrono. So for many of those, those who do not know, this is gonna be Anne Marie's final meeting with us as a, as, as the school committee, and as the recording secretary for the school committee. Anne Marie begins her retirement as of June thirtieth of this year. You know, so honestly, obviously Anne Marie personally, you've been a tremendous asset to me. You know, I've known, you and I, Anne Marie and I started in the district the same year, so we both started in nineteen ninety-three. I've known her since nineteen ninety-three, I've worked with her for twenty-five years in different capacities, whether she was the guidance secretary, or administrative central office, and then as I've transitioned to the superintendentcy, it's just been a tremendous support to me. You know, I think that ultimately Anne Marie's strengths are her organization, her work ethic, her dedication to the students of Carver, her dedication to the faculty and the staff of the Carver Public Schools. The bottom line is if you need assistance, if anybody needs assistance, whether it's a parent, a student, a member of the school committee, a member of the community, they know that Anne Marie will be the person to assist them, and they know that she's gonna follow through and do a great job. But maybe more importantly than all of those things, Anne Marie from my experience of working with her is a person of integrity. And it's with pride that I've had the opportunity to work so closely with Anne Marie over the past twenty-five years, and then specifically over the last couple of years as, as superintendent of the Carver Public Schools. So Anne Marie, thank you for all of your service to the Carver community and to our students. The school committee does have a little, a gift for you. I'd like to present on behalf of the school committee that everybody, anybody else who wants to weigh in can do so as well.
Thank you very much. Thank you everyone.
Thank you.
Very kind.
Thank you.
It's bittersweet.
Oh, I don't know, next, next meeting?
Well, we're sad to see you go but happy for you at the same time.
Thanks, thanks.
I say that?
This is what everybody works towards, you know, at some, some point at the end you go to retirement. But, you know, when you work with such nice people and I'll steal the superintendent's comments as far as being, with pride serving it, it's been my pleasure to serve this committee and Scott and the kids, I'll miss them desperately. I don't think anybody that retires ever misses the work, but they certainly miss the, for me, all the wonderful friendships and people that I've worked with, I have lots of very good memories of this district, so.
Well, like Scott said, it's not just this committee and him, I think behind the scenes you often, things get overlooked and, and you've impacted so many people in this town in so many different ways. I would say being in this business for a while, there's a thing called kind of the retirement glow that teachers tend to get. But honestly, Anne Marie, you tend to glow all the time, and I mean that sincerely, you do. You don't have that same approach, so it's very nice, and you will be missed, so, hope you enjoy it.
I appreciate your time.
And Anne Marie will be leaving us with her daughter replacing her, which I don't think could be much better. I mean, Anne Marie, I can honestly say I've known you, I think my whole life.
You have known me your whole life.
And, and that is amazing because you, you look back and have people you are lucky to have met, and I'm lucky to have met Anne Marie. And now I'm lucky also to have her family. I know her son Nick, Gina, seeing them at the ball field, I'm like, losing you is obviously going to be crushing, but replacing you with Gina and knowing Gina as a person, I'm like, man, we are lucky. Like, we just keep the Matrono name going, we got now Anne Marie with Gina Rush, it's gonna be amazing. So, thank you for everything you've done, thank you for what you've done for my family, thank you for being that great face that you can just walk in that building and say, Anne Marie, I need your help with, when I was maybe, you know, in the first grade, it was tying my shoes to saying, I need help with, you know, when's the next meeting, and having her be able to help me out, so.
I just for quite a bit.
Ooh, stories, yeah.
Alright, alright, alright. Somebody cut me off, cut me off. But thank you, thank you for just being who you are.
I'd like to say, I didn't know you before this, before coming on this committee, and you've been actually one of the most positive things about being on this committee, because, I mean, everybody's great, but whenever I had a question, I was new to the committee, I was new to, this is my first elective position, and if I didn't know something, or I didn't know when something was, or I lost my notes or something, I could just email Anne Marie, and she'd just fill me in on everything and just let me know. She's very good with communication and made you feel at home, it made you feel like part of the family, and I really appreciate that. And I'll, I'll miss seeing you here every night, every month, but I'll, I know I'll see you around town.
You will indeed, you will indeed.
Well, thank you.
Okay, I would say a quick thank you. Thank you very much. You've been such a pleasure, a pleasure to work with, and you've been so helpful, and I so appreciate it just in my little role on the school committee, and I know everyone feels the same way, I will miss seeing you here. And Gina also, well, she sends her regards and sorry she's late, but she wanted me to pass them along to you, so thank you very much. Enjoy your retirement.
Very much.
You're welcome.
I will miss you folks, like, can I say it on the air, I won't miss the meeting, but I'll miss. My pleasure.
Enjoy every moment.
Thank you.
So hard to move on from that, right?
Right.
Uh, we can go on to comments from the general public? Come on up, the APC, how are ya?
Hi, good evening. I would like to actually take a moment to also thank Anne Marie. As I concur exactly what Andrew Cardiello said, and I've known Anne Marie for as long as Andrew, forever, but if any, if you have a question, there was always an answer, and if she didn't have it, she pointed you in the right direction. Thank you for all your work. So I'm here, dressed in my attire for Field Day, my class was purple. This is the end of the year, just got off the phone with a fourth grade teacher, they took a field trip to the Heritage Gardens, so it's been, you know, it's one of those exhausting but exciting times of year. And I'm just gonna actually turn this to not just the end of the year, but thinking about next year. One of the things that the MTA has been working on, and we've talked about a little bit on, on this school committee, is the fair share amendment. The fair share amendment is going to hopefully, and for the benefit of everyone, be on the ballot in November. I look forward to talking to the school committee more about this and about what we can do to help make sure that this does get passed. Schools across the state of Massachusetts are undefunded, and we need to find a way to make sure that our schools and our children get what they deserve. So I really look forward to working with all of you, and hope everyone has a great last couple of weeks of school, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey Debbie.
I heard they put some zip lines up down there now too, in Heritage Museum. Yeah?
Yeah, the adventure, the adventure park, where we was climbing and zip, it's awesome, love it. I know you're shocked I've done that a couple of times, right?
Update from Student Advisory Representative, Jenna, how are ya?
How are you?
Nice to see ya.
I thought it was just me.
Alright, so, hello everyone. So for our student council update, we're already getting started for our new school year and our summer event. So over the summer, we do events such as Old Home Day, over across the street actually, and we set up the tables and put on plates and stapled them down actually, because it gets a little bit windy. We also help out at the Fire Friday Clambake and celebrate those to keep our commu- uh, community safe by giving them food and just celebrating them. And we also have planned two car washes, and it, there's technically free, but there is a huge donation jar, so that's where a lot of our profit comes from. And actually, in like two weeks, myself and Brenna Lagarcos will be heading to Minnesota for the national conference. We'll be heading over there with sixty-eight other Massachusetts delegates, which is the biggest delegation we've ever had, that's awesome. And we'll be returning on June twenty-ninth, so it's pretty quick. And then Brenna and I again, plus Josh Kennedy, will be going to Worcester State University for the MASC summer camp, which is just our state. And then for our actual council, we reached out to Ford, like the car company, which is like super weird. But what we're doing is, they have this like fundraiser where you can bring cars to the school and you can test drive them. And for every test drive you do, you get our thirty dollars, twenty or thirty dollars goes towards our council just for test driving a car, and it's like kind of a competition, like a lot of councils want to do it, so we thought we'd try it this year. So fingers crossed we get that, and like all that money can just go towards the councils for test driving a car, who wouldn't want to do that? Pretty much all I have.
Who, who are test driving the cars, the students?
If they have licenses, yeah.
That sounds, that sounds good.
Yeah.
They have your new cars and you can test drive.
I know, I wish I had a Ford, I don't, my car barely runs.
Jenna, what day is the, uh, day of the car washes, do you have a date?
We don't have a date yet, we still have to plan, because it's supposed to be at the police station in Our Lady of Lourdes, so we have to contact them and see when it works for them too. Alright, any questions?
They do, they, they do pretty good advertising on the day of the event anyway.
I see them out there, yeah.
Oh yeah, with so many signs, they're all in my garage. Alright, thank you.
Very much. Moving on to approval of minutes. Are we accepting motion?
Make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes from May fourteenth.
I'll second.
Motion made in second, any questions, comments, changes, allegiance? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
I'll make a motion to approve the executive session minutes from May fourteenth.
Second.
Motion made in second, any questions or comments there? Is that a roll call, do we do roll calling those?
No.
Okay.
Mr. O'Brien, not to be released.
Oh, not to be released.
Not to be released, yep. Motion made in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Reports from the superintendent.
We've had some small personnel movements since our last meeting. We've had three new hires, two paraprofessionals, Kayla Souza and Brooke Bishop. And we've also hired Lynn Galuzzo as the middle high school administrative assistant to replace Gina Rush, since Gina Rush is replacing Anne Marie Matrono at central office. At the same time, we've also had two resignations, Lindsay Rosendez and Tracy Eldres as middle high school paras. So we've had two para resignations, two para hires, and the hiring of Lynn Galuzzo as the new middle high school assistant. But that's, that's been our personnel movement in the past month.
So, moving on to custodial bargaining agreements.
Yep, and so I'd like to invite Walter Cole up. Walter Cole's here as a representative of the custodial union, so Walter being come up tonight, that'd be great. So it's been, it's been a pleasure to work with the custodial buying group, so the negotiation subcommittee has reached a tentative agreement with the custodians. The custodians tried to say ratified that agreement last Thursday, June seventh, and that agreement's in your background. So we're looking for the school committee to take a motion on that agreement tonight, and then to move forward from there. At this time, the agreement is a two percent increase for FY nineteen, zero percent for FY twenty, two percent for FY twenty-one.
I'd like to make, make a motion to ratify the agreement for the custodial bargaining for two thousand nineteen to, through two thousand twenty-one.
Second.
Motion made in second, does it need to be more specific to the language there, is that alright?
Nope, that's fine.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions or comments or?
And I was gonna say Walter, you know, it was a pleasure to work with the custodial group, we met a few times, we've been meeting throughout, really, we started back in January, believe so? Yes. So we, we met throughout the spring, I had, have had several productive meetings to reach this negotiation, and it was a pleasure to work with the custodians and their bargaining group. So Walter, I don't know if you have any thoughts or?
Oh, I have a lot, but you don't wanna hear it. We're good.
Well, well, thank you for reserving them, and thank you for coming to the table and doing this, I hope to be signing more of these, so, this will be better.
This is my last one.
Yeah, well, this is Walter's last one.
Alright.
The only thing I wanna add on that real quickly is that with the two zero two, that is for the top step, there was new steps added that are above that bottom step, so even though it's a two zero two, there is a new salary scheduled to go along with that.
Yeah, so, yeah, it was a ratification of a new salary schedule, and then, but all, all the current custodians were placed on the top step. So, and this is a grandfathered in all current custodians, members of the custodial union to be on the top step, all new hires would be on the steps below, when they came in as appropriate to the new salary schedule.
Any other questions or concerns? All those in favor of ratifying?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous?
Unanimous, and we have, we have a copy of the official agreement Walter, and James will sign, and if you could sign, that'd be great, a copy for you, a copy for, uh, for the committee.
So Walter, which wall did you sign in the building? Which building, you, are you with the high school or high school? Did you come down and get the sign in the, of the elementary school buildings?
Well, he, Walter had the final farewell.
Yeah. Yeah, did you get the sign?
All three of my girls went there.
I was hoping you attended.
That is your copy to keep.
Okay, sir.
Thanks very much.
Thank you, thank you very much Walter.
Thank you Walter.
Thank you Walter, take care.
Moving on to educational blueprint.
Waiting for, waiting for it to come up on the screen. There it is. I'm waiting for it to come up on my screen. It's a little slow popping up there, it's a little slow popping up there too. So actually, better if you'd scroll down to the bottom. So I'm just gonna do a little overview of the educational blueprint, kind of as a reminder for the committee and a reminder for the community, of the purpose of this document and, and the goals here. And then we're gonna look back and we have a presentation from Ms. Maestis and Mrs. Holly, who are gonna kinda take us through the action steps that have happened this year in regards to blueprinting each of the, each of the buildings, and then tie that into their school improvement plans for next year. But if you scroll down to the bottom, I wanna start with the, uh, the tagline. So we developed this tagline of cultivating empowered learning and responsible citizenship. And the more is, the more I've reflected about that tagline, it's really made me think about, I think it's just a great summary of what we wanna do, and that's, that's our goal, that's our vision. We wanna work with all of our students, all of the community, we wanna be cultivating empowered learners. An empowered learner in my mind is a student who believes they can do and achieve anything. You know, there, there's so much information out there, people can't know everything. They can know very little actually, but they can learn anything. And they're gonna, they need to, they need to establish a set of skills, a set of traits that empower them to believe that they can learn in any situation and be successful in any situation. And if we, if our students leave as empowered learners, believing they could go into any situation, any job, any school, and be successful, and learn the skills and the traits they need to learn for that job, then we've achieved our vision. We've achieved our mission. And then ultimately, the next part of that, developing responsible citizens. We wanna develop a citizenry that is learned, but then also responsible, and, and looks at the society as a whole, reflects on society as a whole, supports appropriate positions that they've, that they wanna support. You know, are really involved, involved in our, in the United States of America, revolve, involved from being responsible citizens in Carver, to being responsible citizens in Massachusetts, to being responsible citizens in the United States, to being responsible citizens in the world. So when I look at this thing, cultivating empowered learners and responsible citizenship, I, I think the tagline really does state what we as a school district wanna be about. And ultimately, our goal is that this blueprint will provide us with the steps, the things we need to do to ensure that we're achieving this vision, achieving this idea of cultivating empowered learning and responsible citizenship. And, so the blueprint's made up of four strategic objectives, each of those objectives are supported by strategic initiatives. The objectives are, are, are big rocks, the things we wanna achieve. And our, and our mindset, when I talked about this last year, we said, these objectives are not achievable in a year. So when you lay out your strategic objectives, you're not saying, okay, at the end of the year, we're gonna check that off, we completed that. These are ongoing big picture items that may take three, five, seven years to achieve. And a little different from a district improvement plan of the past, which would kinda get revised and maybe specific objectives would change. Where, we as the administrative team sat down and said, what are the big things we wanna achieve in the next three to five to seven years? And what are the things that we need to be continuously working on? And then I look back at these objectives, I reflect on this document that was created a year ago, and I look at these four core objectives, I say, this is it, these are the things we need to be working on. And I'm looking at the first one, support safe schools. You know, obviously, there's a lot that's happened in society in the past six months that supports the concept that we need to be about supporting safe schools. And safe schools isn't only about physical safety, it's about emotional safety and wellbeing as well. Social emotional, you know, so, it's supporting students who may be struggling with social emotional crisis, and also supporting and working with students as social emotional learners. So it, support safe schools, a wide gamut of things. But I think it's fundamental to the educational process right now, we need to be doing everything we can, and we need to keep doing more to ensure that every student feels safe, both physically and socially emotionally in school. Engage the community. Obviously, for us as Carver, we need to do that, and I think we've been working hard as a committee, I think the town's been working hard to engage the community to support the wide range of projects that have been happening throughout this district, from the building of the new elementary school, to the accelerated repair project of the middle high school, to the new football field project, to supporting our sports events. We had, you know, yesterday, I'm going off on a little bit of tangent here, but yesterday we had a softball game, you know, state, uh, state tournament softball game at home, and we had a great crowd there. You know, we should be working to ensure that we're getting people out to support all of those things. Middle school council last week, went to the middle school council last week, and the, the middle, the middle school auditorium was sold out almost. You know, it was almost standing room only. Went to the elementary council last week, and same thing, it was just a lot of support. So engage in the community is a pretty wide ranging goal, there's a lot of things we need to do, and, and we, and that's things, something we need to keep working on, because I'm gonna tie that, I guess I'll skip down, because I'm going a little bit stream of consciousness here. But if we go down from engage the community and skip down to leveraging leadership policy and funding, those two things are intertwined as well. Because ultimately, we all know, as Tammy mentioned, her comments from the comments of the APC, you know, districts through, across the state of Massachusetts are underfunded. I would say in some ways, our district is underfunded, you know, we need to, we need to improve our ability to leverage leadership policy and funding, we need to engage the community to get them to, to build their support to bring some more money back into operating budgets. You know, obviously, there's been a real focus within this community of supporting capital projects, but now we need to work to engage the community, to look at how we're leveraging leadership policy and funding, to bring appropriate funding back to the operating budgets of the school, so we can best meet the needs of our students and provide the appropriate programming that we need to, to cultivate empowered learning and responsible citizenship. So those are the things that have to occur. Enhancing teaching and learning, obviously that's our goal, you know, the, not that these other things aren't the core of what we do, but really enhancing teaching and learning should be at the core of what we're doing. We wanna make sure we're doing everything we can to sustain a syst- a, a system-wide environment where exceptional instruction and student achievement are the core of our work, and realized through collaborative action. So as I prepared for tonight, as I thought about the educational blueprint that the administrative team brought together, and last year I, I gave more details, this, this document was developed with input from teachers, I went out and had, did presentations and faculty meetings, I got inputs from parents and student council, the, the community was engaged in the building of the document. But now reflecting a year after the document's been developed, and my own, my own personal reflection is, these are the four big rocks. These are the things that we need to be doing as a school community to ensure that we're achieving that idea of cultivating, cultivating empowered learners and responsible citizens. So what's gonna happen this evening is Ruby and Janelle are gonna talk a little bit about what's been happening within their buildings to support the educational blueprint this year, and then tie it into their school improvement plans for actions that we wanna continue to have happen to support these four big rocks, to support these four strategic objectives. We're not necessarily looking for a vote on this document, because the school committee approved this document last year, it actually at the June meeting, with the concept of this is a three to five year document. So we're not looking to revise this or change it or get our supportive approval as it stands, and sort of the committee could do that. But ultimately, our goal is just to kinda give everybody an update of where we stand. But even more importantly to that, is my mind is restating those key ideas. Restating that as a school district, we wanna be about supporting safe schools, engage in the community, enhancing teaching and learning, leveraging leadership policy and funding, so that we can cultivate empowered learning and responsible citizenship. With that, I will turn it over to, we're gonna start with Ruby, so Ruby, Ruby and Janelle, and I know on the agenda we said educational blueprint and school improvement plans, but I think it makes sense for Ruby to kinda give an update of this is what we've been doing at the elementary school in terms of our four strategic objectives, and this is what we see ourselves doing next year in terms of our school improvement plan, and then for Janelle to do the same thing. So we're gonna kinda put these two, uh, put those two pieces together, if, if the committee's okay with that.
Yeah, the only question I would ask the committee is, do you wanna, do you wanna ask questions as we go along? Or would you rather wait till, till the end and then ask your questions?
I can wait till the end, if, if that's easier, Ruby, would you then?
Do you have the preference?
Do you have the preference?
Not necessarily, maybe it'll, let's see how it goes, I guess, you know, just because.
So if you have a burning question you feel like you wanna ask, feel comfortable do that, but maybe I'll just try to hold questions to end.
Alright, so we'll get started on the educational blueprint, so on the progress that we've made at the elementary school this year. And I just wanted to say, before I get started on this, is, as Mr. Neef was speaking about the educational blueprint, when I really paused a few weeks ago to look at it and reflect, I really felt a, a sense of excitement as I was looking over again, because we, you know, it was a little over a year ago that we started this whole process, and we really dug deep, worked with all of the administrative leadership team, the teachers and the students that were involved, and parents. And it's a different sense of ownership, I just have to say. So it's, as I'm talking about it, I'm excited about it, because it very much applies this year, just as it did last year, and it's, it's a refreshing document also, different than the school improvement plan. So I just, I just have to say, there's a, there's a notable difference and a strong sense of ownership. So I'll jump into the safe and supportive schools, our first goal. And as I mentioned, there's a, a group of, of administrative leadership team, the teachers, the parents, Carver community members that have all been involved in helping to sort of bring this to life. So, as, as I had mentioned, or we've talked about early on in the, in the school year midway, we received the Safe and Supportive School Grant, which was ten thousand dollars. Prior to us receiving that grant, we were moving forward with our goal to become a trauma-sensitive school regardless. It just so turned out that in December, there was an email we received from the D E S C about the grant, and we, we, we took the opportunity to work together, specifically Mrs. Foley and Mrs. Dawson and, and Mrs. Cargill to apply for that grant. And through that, we were able to dig even deeper and move a little bit faster on this initiative. So that, at that point, we established the school, um, school community stakeholders group, we talked about all of those things that we were working on. The, the folks that are involved in that really are teachers, support staff at the elementary school, parents. And, you know, I thought that I would go ahead and name them all again, I think that that's just important, so that you know who's, who's working very closely on this, starting with, in fifth grade, Sarah Balboni, in fourth grade, Erica Tarquini, in second grade, Caitlin Owen, in kindergarten, Terry Sexton, Nicole McNeil, one of our special education teachers, Leslie O'Reilly, another special education teacher, Lisa Hines, our psychologist, Mary Langner, one of our counselors, Jill Liddy, who's our behavior therapist for the district, Jocelyn Kelly, who is a paraprofessional that's been working with us for about three years now. And I just wanted to mention, she's a, she's actually become a certified teacher, but she's been so committed to working at the elementary, just because she's embraced so much of what we've been doing. Jenne Lineham, who's a PTO parent, she's on our committee as well, Adam Holmes is on our committee as well, Eric Germaine from Carver Fire, and also Jessie Boyle has been, attends as well, Freddie Mello from the police department, Mrs. Foley, and Mrs. Dawson, and myself. And then I know that there's a district Safe and Supportive Team that's working with Meredith on it as well. So that team has been working on our action plan, which really is supporting students with social emotional learning skills. We're working also with Joel Rustusia, who co-authored the book, uh, Trauma-Sensitive Schools. He has been, uh, consulting with us on a monthly basis. And we met with him la- last week to review our draft plan. Um, he gave us some high marks initially and he will continue to work with us next. Uh, next year going into the school year, he's someone who will also be able to come in and work with our staff to provide. Um, consultation, support, observations, and, and, um, just really building a relationship with everyone, including the, the students. Um, the other thing that we've been working very closely on, as you know, uh, is our Alice training, which at the elementary school, it's the ABCs of Alice. And our goal was to work, was to ha- again, help to ease some of the fears that our teachers have. And to give them some skills to know what to do and to give them some options in the event of, um, of an intruder. Our goal also was to support the students and give them some skills that are age-appropriate and developmentally appropriate as well. The goal was for us to be able to deliver, um, lessons, student lessons and teacher lessons. Twice a year and to meet with our parents at least once a year in, i- in the big picture. I feel like, um, that's, that's a big goal and we did it. We were able to work with the students in October. With the ABCs of Alice, we met with the stu- with parents that, uh, attended in October as well to one of our, our meetings. And then we also were able to, uh, provide the lessons in May to students and teachers again. Which included the walks to our safe place, which. We know we'll have to adjust that going into next year. But, um, our progress, we felt, um. Again, that it was a, a, a big goal, but we were able to do it and we're proud to have done that. Um, under the second goal, community engagement. We have been continually working on our outreach efforts. We've surveyed our parents, we have gathered information in terms of, of. How our parents are feeling regarding the programming that we're providing. Uh, wh- uh, whether it's open house, whether it's presentations, PTO meetings. All of those things, gathering information from parents and then adjusting, um, what we're doing and how we're doing it and when we're doing it as well. We have updated our procedures for screening and registration for new students. Uh, that's been an ongoing process over the last, um, couple of years, two or three years. But it's a more comprehensive screening that gives us some value, valuable information to help to place our students. We even do this more comprehensive enroll- registration when a student comes into the school year midway. Let's say they're coming from, I don't know, Pembroke or Plymouth, wherever, or another state. Uh, in January, they sh- you know, January third. So we really want to spend time with the student. Screening them, whether they're in kindergarten or fifth grade. We wanna meet with the parents or parents or guardians and spend time gathering information again. Because it's gonna help their, their transition. It's also gonna help our own students transition, uh, the students that are, the student is going to be placed with. And again, it's more information for the teacher so that we can give the teacher the support that he or she needs. So we feel like that process is, um, continues to be strengthened, uh, and. Again, it just really helps with placement. We've also, uh, have been working on strengthening our, our relationship and, and our, our connectedness with parents. Through conferences and, um, open house. We've done a lot of things in terms of community engagement with the new school. So our subcommittee, uh, has been meeting throughout the year. We've worked with the PTO, we've worked with, um, the recreation department as well. As you know, with the project area, um, naming, presentations, a lot of those things. You know, I won't go over everything, but we, that's, that's something else, again, that we have really been working with the community to, um. Engage them and, and again, it's just very exciting. We're gonna continue to do that with regard to the grand opening. And the ribbon cutting and just, um, including, including the community, including all of our stakeholders. And, um, we're looking forward to that. I know again that I'm not covering every little thing, there's just so much that we do. Um, with regards to elevate teaching and learning. So our curriculum leadership group has, uh, really taken the lead on that and includes the, uh, includes Meredith. Uh, the administrators, our director of literacy, our special education director, our math coach, Jen Kelly. Um, and, um, newly formed summer math review committee. We, as you know, we received a state grant that is going to help us look more at our core math program. Uh, one of the things that what Meredith worked with Jen Kelly on this summer was the Science Math Academy. And the feedback from the teachers was very, it was pretty solid in terms of how teachers felt coming into the school year, especially for term one. With some, some, some skills and some training so that they could then implement the science standards. So that has. Again, just been a boost for the teachers as well. Karen Tiker's been working closely with us on the UDL model and will continue to do that. We do that through an organization called CAST. And they, they're coming into the elementary school and working with, uh, smaller groups of inclusion teachers. You know, like s- about six to eight, um, teachers. And what they're, what the coaching model looks like is they'll come in after the initial training or PD. They're coming into the classroom, observing, sitting in the back, taking notes with even small teams of educators. And then, um, having an opportunity in another room in the cla- in the school building to just talk and reflect on those observations. What, um, what skills, uh, the students were working on, how that, um. Universal design for learning model, um, was app- applicable for that lesson. So that sort of thing. So we're trying to do more onsite, kinda live kinds of coaching for the teachers. Um, and then as well as data coaching and intervention planning that Michelle Taylor, who is here with us. And, um, Jen Kelly support us with as well. And our IST model of support, so IST is our instructional study team. It's a team comprised of, um, educators, uh, and again, Mrs. Taylor and Mrs. Kelly. And oftentimes a counselor and administrator who sit and discuss a student that has been referred to us by a teacher. And the idea is to really give the teacher some support on how to provide instructional strategies for those student. So that IST model really, um, is an opportunity to also give the teacher some coaching as well. At, at, there are times when that process may lead us to refer the child for special education testing. At times, not all the time. But that's the, um, the model of support that has continually refined and, um. Really i- is something that the teachers find very valuable and they need. And then in terms of le- leveraging leadership policy and funding, um, again, the group that's really focusing on that is our. Our, um, alt team. Brad's been working closely on, with us on that and Mr. Neef. Our, our progress with regards to that ar- area really is. We're always reviewing our, our funding. We're always reviewing our data. We just had a data meeting today at our faculty meeting. And we're looking at how our students are progressing in all areas. And then what the team does is identifying what, what grade levels or what pocket of students. Or what areas we really need to allocate more of our resources. So we'll, we continue to do that. And we also look at our master schedule each year. We've, um, been meeting with our elementary teachers over the last three months. To look at our master schedule, which is, um. Very detailed, especially when you have such a lo- a large school with the number of staff that we have. And ensuring that within the eight to three day, we're getting everything in. And there's a lot of competition from all, actually all of us and it's, uh, can be very enjoyable sometimes. Because Meredith will be there saying, okay, we need nine, ninety minutes of math. And Mrs. Taylor is, okay, well, I need ninety minutes of ELA and then we need ninety more minutes of science. So it's, it's, um, it's a lot of. A healthy discussion that's really focused on the students. And then we have been, Brett and I and Scott have been also working closely on the budget. And making sure that we're reviewing all of the, the, the needs we have and that's going to be a non-going process because of the new school. And I can't forget Dave, Dave's been working on all of that, those pieces with, with us as well. So that, that's kind of the, the progress on the. Bridge blueprint and now I'm gonna go, or I'll take questions and then we can go over the next phase.
Uh, yeah, uh, the, the actual, I mean, I'd go back. I hope I have everything in correct order. The group that you had mentioned, um, that was developing the action plan, correct? Yes, is that something that we're, will that be presented to us? Is that how that's gonna?
We can. They probably be very excited to do that.
And is that something for the lead up into the new school, something we'd see in like?
Yes, yes, we, we are finalizing that now. The DESC expects that, to receive that in the next few weeks. And then they would give us, um, notification on, on what our status is with that, um. One of the things that our consultant continues to tell us regarding our action plan for, uh, safe and supportive schools. Is think small is the new bid. So take some small steps. Um, a lot of the things that the, that the committee has already done over the course of the last few months. Um, are already our action plan. So we did a n- needs assessment. We did a survey for, with the parents. We received a little over two hundred. We submitted the survey, um, via Google. And we also provided a hard copy in May, mid-May. And we se- received a little over two hundred and we looked at the numbers. Obviously, we would, we would like to get. More, we have eight hundred students. We'd like to get a little bit more, but I think that, that's a work in progress. We have to continue to, to figure out how we can get more, more feedback, more input from our parents. But that was really, that's one of the action steps really, because, um. We needed to gather that information. Again, did another needs assessment or a survey with our teachers regarding, um. Some of the social emotional learning that is taking place now in school. And how we're using some of the programs such as responsive classroom. We use a morning meeting. So we wanted to gather feedback from them. So some of those action steps are already in place, but Andy, yes, the answer to your question is we can definitely present it. And I would see that coming in the next. Couple months or so, because, um, we have to, we'll hear back from the DESC with regard to if they've accepted it or if we need to tweak it, um.
So we could definitely bring that back for August, September on the agenda for school committee.
In regards to community engagement, I, I know, you know, uh, not publicly, but maybe, uh, just one-on-one. I tell you all the time that I really, you know, uh, my family speaks very highly of what you guys are doing at the elementary school to, to, um. Spread, get things out to us, get things, uh, you know, get things going. This is a, a huge year. As far as, uh, you know, with the new school opening and all these events. Uh, and I think you and your staff have done a great job. So I'd like to, you know, make that public, um. The only thing, a question on three was the teacher feedback. So we've had a lot of, um. Meetings and I've been hearing, uh, just as far as what teacher feedback is. So how is that, is that something where someone would come to you? And tell you that they took a lot from this or didn't take much from this, or is that something that they're, uh, you know, put their name on and send it to you? Or is that something that they can let, let you know, you know, without having their name on it? Cause there's a lot of coaching and training, so I would wanna make sure the teachers are getting as much out of it as what you're telling us they are.
So, um, uh, the administrators and the, the three that are in the, the, in the room right now. We receive feedback from the teachers all the time. Some of it is through surveys, some of it is anonymous surveys. Some of it is, um, just notes or emails just regarding some of the practices or some of the things that we've, uh, we've done. Whether it's a meeting or whether it's an IST meeting, or whether it's a parent meeting, or whether it's a survey. Um, so they give us feedback that way. Um, Meredith and the PDC conducted a survey in April regarding the teachers, um, feedback. On what they felt were priorities for professional development. And she gave them, um, various questions. And she wanted to know what they felt they needed in terms of tech, what the tech priorities were. And she also asked them what other priorities. So she kinda separated it out, separated that out. And you, you can jump in Meredith just to make sure, but I wanna make sure I get that, got that right.
In terms of that survey, our intention actually is to bring that back in August as well as we went into the new year saying. This was the survey that was done of the professional staff in terms of what professional development opportunities we're gonna do. And we were gonna share that survey and the results with the committee in August.
So that's a various, various types of feedback.
Thanks very much. I am good.
Uh, no, not, not at this time, I'm just listening.
Alright, so then I'll, I'll jump into the school improvement plan.
Can I just add onto that real quick? So for four point one, um, just the leverage leadership policy and funding. As we go forward next year, um, we do plan on putting in this attached to the budget. Um, obviously, I had a review of data on where things fall. Moving to new school is a little bit difficult. Once we get one full year in and get the budget development, we'll be tied to requesting positions. Um, stuff like that. So that's how this will tie into next year's budget.
Alright, so first I wanted to start by just acknowledging several people who have worked with us. On the school improvement plan and there are school council members as well as educators on the team. Andrea Blackwell, she's one of our parents that's on the council. So it's Kim Clark and Diana Wiley. Then I also have, um, Tish Leatherby, one of the teachers on our committee and Leslie O'Reilly. So it, we also have Michelle Taylor, Taylor, um, Tanya Dawson and Paula Fo- Foley that attend. Um, the meetings regularly. And. As I was reflecting on the school improvement plan and really looking at the plan. And talking with all of the educators that have taken part on some level. I really just have to say that when you look at the core values, Scott talked a lot about the, the four, um, priorities. But when you look at the core values, uh, it really makes me feel good to, to say that all of the teachers, all of the administrators. Everyone that was really looking at it, when you go back and you look at the core values. People felt really proud because it, that's what we were always working on, which are, all students can be successful. Learning is ongoing and lifelong. Decisions are always made in the best interest of students. People would ask, wait a minute, is this deci- decision a good decision for students? And we would all have to really pause, reflect and, and answer that. So in terms of holding account, us, for holding ourselves accountable, I feel like team members are, are doing a fabulous job of that. And that everyone is treated with dignity and, and respect and. That school, home and community partnerships are absolutely a hundred and fifty percent vital for us, for, for continuous learning to happen. So I just felt really good about that and I wanted to say that. Alright, so jumping into the first priority, support safe schools. It's, it's also a little bit tough for, for us or for me not to start making the. School improvement plan look like the old school improvement plan. So, so I just wanted to say that, I, uh, we're trying to keep it concise and succinct. And not tell you about all of the hundreds of things that we do.
And the only thing I would jump on that is if people remember, there actually, there's been some shift in the committee since the old school program plan. But the old school program plan was in many ways a laundry list of everything that happened in the school. I believe it was twenty-seven pages long. Uh, cause it was just a list, it was a list of what the school does. Uh, which is in, sometimes isn't important to getting that out to the community and saying, these are all the things we're doing. Uh, just because they're not on this list doesn't mean they're not happening. But this is, the goal here is to be more focused and specific under these core objectives of. Safe and support, you know, supporting safe schools, community engagement, elevated teaching and learning, leverage leadership policy and funding. And so it's more, one, one of the specific action steps that we're gonna try to take in the next year or two. Not, not listing everything we're doing under those key pieces. But, but, uh, but you, you also wanna sub, you also wanna get excited and say, we're doing all these great things.
Right. Okay, so under safe and supportive schools, um, we have the, a PBIS model, um, and overarching objectives. I wanted to make sure that I went over that again. So our PBIS overarching objectives are be responsible, be respectful, be ready to learn. And, and, and that's how we're ju- trying to ensure that we, um, have a safe and supportive school. We're working with our students on our care, our cares, character traits. And CARES stands for cooperative, assertive, responsible, empathetic, sh- show self-control. So how we do that is we embed those, those character traits in everything we do throughout the day. From the start of the day to the end of the day. So teachers are doing it in their classrooms, paraprofessionals are, are. Talking to students, reminding students of their responsibility, modeling for. are are talking to students, reminding students of their responsibility, modeling for them as well. We do that at the at the beginning of the day, on the circle, when we leave at the end of the day, talking to ki- students on the bus. One of the, one of the, one little thing that showed huge gains, just a little example, is um Mrs. Albin, she's one of our speech and language pathologists, Mrs. Dawson and myself, every morning get on the bus and we greet the children on the bus. And this year midway, we started to, we recognized that not all of the students were greeting us when we um would greet them, would say good morning and sometimes we'd have maybe one out of ten or twelve that would greet us, so we said we have to change that, the students need to to know how to gre- greet you back and ask you how your day is, so that that might, that's a, well, that's a small thing, yet it's a, it's a big thing, right? So we we started to talk to the kids in I'm telling you, we have maybe forty five seconds to a minute on the bus, but we have it every day. So yeah, it's a hundred and eighty minutes, right, so you can really maximize that time and talk to the kids about um greetings, for example, and we'd model for them and we'd model with the driver. And that just grew to the point that teachers were saying like, wh- what's going on, the kids are all greeting us, they're asking us if we need help, they're asking us how our day is going, they're asking us. So so just a little e- example of a uh those character traits and how we can embed skills in thirty seconds or a minute. Because it's grown now to the point that we have student greeters, cause they were so excited, now we have student greeters that help us every morning with talking to the students and and greeting the kids and saying high five to each other and it's, we have kindergartners and fifth graders that are please pick me, I wanna be a greeter today. So that's just a little example of how you can really maximize your time and how you can teach a um um a skill and how we can all really working together, help to reinforce skills as well. So then that the second one, um under SEL competencies, um um among students, what we're trying to do here uh with the Safe and Supportive Schools Committee through that grant, um and the parents and the community members, what we're trying to do is teach self-awareness, self-management, responsible decision-making, social awareness and relationship skills and all of those things are the SEL competency skills that the DESE has been, you know, uh talking to districts and wa- and wanting us to ensure that we're implementing those throughout the school day, and so we're trying to do it in the big picture, through the school-wide um assemblies and things that we're doing, like on the bus. We're working with our teachers to provide them with some PD so that they can do that in the classroom and then also looking at ways that we can provide that to students in a tiered model of support, so for example, the responsive classroom morning meeting that we've talked about quite a bit, that's a a tier one, where all of our students will get, or are getting social emotional learning support. Everyone's, that's happening every day in every classroom, every morning. Then for tier two, working with our support staff, such as our counselors and a school psychologist and other staff that we'll um we're able to train to deliver tier two social skill lessons, so for those students that um need additional support. And then even tier three, so that we can provide social emotional skills in an even smaller group or maybe in one-on-one, because they really need one, two and three levels of support. So that's part of that second goal. Um then uh we're also working on PD for all staff as part of the the grant, the three areas that we're focusing on is um professional development for teachers with regard to social emotional skills. What we're also working on is building um our parent and community partnership and we're also working on our code of conduct, which um then we'll be able to update our ha- our school handbook on. And what we're looking with, looking at closely with our our code of conduct is moving towards more of a restorative justice um plan, so that we're delivering support to our students in um in a more um relational model as opposed to punitive. So any questions so far?
And that's also, I if you if you remember, we haven't done the handbook for the elementary school as of yet. So we're gonna bring that back in August, cause they're still working on that.
Right.
Uh so updates and revisions that they somewhat, we was just saying, so we got a, we got a chalk full of August agenda already.
I know. And then the other thing that I've I've included on this is um training all s- staff and students in the new school with all of our updated safety and evacuation protocols. So again, fire drills, the Alice safety practices and procedures, all of those we're gonna be working on very closely, so at the beginning of the summer, we're gonna be working with the police, fire, HMFH, the architect, conducting team walkthroughs and then updating all of our procedures. Um making sure that w- we've done those drills as a small admin team with those um safety departments from town and then being prepared for that with our new teachers on the first day of school. Um then under number two, engaging the community, we will continue to develop our focused outreach and our community partnerships. Um based on the feedback that we we see from the survey, we are going to continue our annual health and wellness fair, we've had to be a little bit strategic this year just because we're also very conscientious of all the the events that are happening at the school and we we're uh conscientious about the number of events that are gonna be held at the beginning of the year and not expecting parents to come, you know, for three events in the span of ten days. So we're really looking closely at that and so we've adjusted when we will have our health and wellness fair. We had it last year at the beginning of the year, which was, which was great because our parents were coming to the campus, but next year we've moved it to October when we're gonna have our um parent teacher conferences. And then again, all of this um, all of this I'm s- saying, and I'm very excited about all this, but we have to be in, be very mindful of the fact that we're in a new school and we're all gonna be on a learning curve with just learning the new school. Um so we also do an early childhood outreach, um and we will be adding a career fair to our um our community partnerships for next year. And with that cu- career fair, the plan is to include, uh is to um gather information from our parent community first, cause we would like to see them and uh have them bring into the school all of the careers that they're involved in and share that out with the students, so we're looking forward to that at some point next year. And then um the next part of engaging the community, we're gonna uh continue to increase our home su- support by strengthening the parent teacher relationships um improving our communication our, at our traditional events, but also looking at PD support to um to support the teachers in their ongoing work of really developing the meaningful relationships with with um their students' parents. And and that's partially also due to our increased ELL population. So then under number three, enhancing teaching and learning, uh we will continue to provide professional development in line with that teacher feedback and and student need and that goes to part of what I was saying earlier, the based on the survey results from the PDC, we'll be looking at um providing teachers with training on the their their top choices. They had talked a lot about how they really wanted more support with social emotional learning, um content-specific PD and the new instructional strategies that are research-based. And then their top tech priorities were, um they want to know more about apps that are related to their content area using Google Drive and then more on making uh on using Makerspace. So a lot of this is just using the new technology in the new school, the new spaces and really getting familiar with all of that. We also will continue to provide them with ongoing training uh in with executive functioning and math coaching. And um part of our UDL training, that's that's ongoing, we will continue to work with um Mrs. Tiger to help us to provide that coaching um with that small group of teachers that um started it two years ago. And that model really is to start with that small group and then expand slowly as you go. With eh especially teachers that are in interested and invested in that, it it just works better. Then with the um under three as well, we are really again looking at new school acclamation. What we really have to do is give our teachers time to familiarize themselves with their space, their classroom, how things work within their classroom, um technology, um temperature, just eh you know, just getting from one point to another. A part of our plan for the beginning of the new school is to conduct mini workshops in the new facility using the new technology and encouraging teachers that uh um from various um eh and support staff, encouraging them to be a part of providing the training in their specialty area, for example, um if you have Mrs. Hines helping out with delivering a mini workshop in the um let's just say one of the gathering areas, because we'll have a short throw projector, we'll have a document camera, we'll have the um the screen, we'll have tools, so we really wanna incorporate all of those new spaces and the new technology and provide trainings that we're mandated to do anyway, but that's a way of getting everyone familiar, comfortable and kinda rotating through the new school. Um then under leveraging leadership policy and funding, again here, we're um gonna continue to encourage strategic use of data through our thoughtful and flexible use of resources. We talked a little bit about that earlier with reviewing the budget as we go, are always doing that, um and reviewing the needs of the student population. In terms of student enrollment, our, at this time, our numbers haven't necessarily changed, but I do anticipate that with the new school that we could potentially have more students and that would be great, so again, just looking at our specific student needs and making those adjustments, which that that's just something that we do all of the time, um but being more specific really with what our students need. And then um adjusting the budget based on how things go, we we put some things in in the budget in October anticipating all of the things in the new school, including new technology, um the um machines, equipment that we have, and we'll have to assess that in the next few months and see what is needed at that point. Okay.
Thank you Ruby.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks Ruby.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any questions? I know it's a lot of information. I'm excited about it, very excited.
Thank you, thank you very much, well done, thank you.
So now invite um Ms. Holly up to give an overview of what should happen at the middle high school in terms of the educational blueprint and tying into school improvement plan for next year. I think it's two s- uh no, I think it's two separate presentations.
Thank you so much. Good evening, everyone, thank you for the opportunity to share with you the phenomenal things that are happening at the middle high school. Um I will try to capture all that has transpired this year, which is not an easy task. Um like Ruby shared earlier, it's critically important that we highlight some things and there are some i- other items that we're not able to speak to this evening. Um but I'm definitely always welcome you guys to come out and to invite the community also come out and hear some of the things. This year, we actually had teachers and the department chairs share some of the highlights, because we recognize that we're not always able to capture um some of the things that are going on on a day-to-day basis. So before you now, you will see the educational blueprint, which discussed some of the ways that we have focused in on being able to um achieve some of the initiatives that we've identified. So as we move to Safe and Supportive Schools, you'll see that we have gone through and completed a full implementation of Alice procedures. And one of the things in being reflective about that is we've started to identify how do we move forward for our next academic year to ensure that we're always being cognizant of this being uncomfortable, especially with the state of where we are as a nation and figuring out how do we do it in the best way to support staff and students through something that should not be covered at schools, but unfortunately has to be covered. Um so we've also worked this year to secure barricades and safety buckets and other items. Um in lieu of just consistently reflecting on best practices, we now have our custodial staff going around the building twice daily in addition to administrators and just teachers are very diligent to contact me if doors are ajar and we're really working hard because we have now with the new signage on the doors, you can see how many doors we have, so just being able to monitor them throughout the school and make sure that we're all safe throughout the building has become part of our common practice at this point. As we move for our response team, we've invited not just our school resource officer, but we've also reached out to and Sergeant Ritz has been there on occasions to these quarterly meetings that we have and we've also reached out to fire, so as we look towards things, as we move forward to keep it safe, we wanna make sure that we're also in compliance and that we have all of the people who need to be part of the conversation involved to make sure that we're as safe as possible. We've participated with the superintendent in having and the chief in having a community forum, because we recognize that parents have been reaching out just wanting to be aware, uh and it was a really rich discussion because parents shared some concerns they had, um some parents shared, you know, having more information is helpful, some parents shared that having too much information, so for us, it's really always about that fine balance about how do we ensure people are informed, but just making sure that we're also keeping the measures that need to be close to the school, that we're doing that as well. We redesigned our entry process to eliminate, previously we had students coming in into entrances and we really solidified that this year where we have all of our parents who are coming in to pick up students or to dismiss students coming in through that one entrance and that's the only place you'll see signage where it does say Carbon Middle High School. In the morning, what we've done is students are allowed to enter the building through both doors, but myself or the assistant principal were outside just as kids are coming in off of the bus. Um and this was something again, that as we've been reflective about our practice, that we've made some of those enhancements, cause we realized in the morning we were inside dealing with parents who may have shown up with concerns, recognizing that we didn't have um adults outside and the police department has been phenomenal in helping us in being a presence as well outside of school as we've moved forward this year. For PBIS, we've we've really targeted our tier three students, recognizing that those are the students who are demonstrating the greatest needs, we've identified them. Um and we're happy to say that all students who fall within that classification are connected to an in-school program and receiving supports to help them move from tier three to tier th- two within the PBIS structure. And continuing on with Safe and Supportive Schools, um social emotional learning, um we've recognized that we've had an increase in the amount of students who've been hospitalized throughout the year. Um and when students came back, we didn't have a transition program for them, so they were coming back from hospitalization and just going back into classes. We recognize that that was a need that we had, so we worked with Mrs. Tygart to really be able to capture a program that would allow students to come back and to go back to classes based on their needs. Um and we're happy to say, we found it to be extremely successful. Um it's almost like a high and low almost, where we're happy that we have the program, but we wish we didn't have to have the program and the numbers that we're seeing are pretty high this year. Um and we're looking to continuously grow the pr- the program and have more assistants available through the student assistance counselor as we move into the next academic year. Um through the work of Mr. Schultz as well as our school nurse Michelle, we've really been able to prepare and become proactive as we move forward with the AEDs um to be able to secure funding to purchase those as we move forward and having them throughout the building, recognizing locations that are utilized after school, not just by us as a school community, but also through the community coming in. Um and we're looking to have the staff trained this year, all of the administrators are looking to be trained and then potentially even considering in the future, can we have some training for um individuals who are coming in and renting out our space, we we never wanna have an o- opportunity arise where someone needs to utilize the system and they're not trained. Um the great thing about the growth of how the the industry has been with AEDs is it's pretty self-explanatory. So the average person, if they aren't trained, are still gonna be able to do something to help, but we really wanna make sure that we are trained as a school community to, not just during the school day, but after the school day. I'm recognizing that our students are consistently involved, um the day ends at two, but oftentimes if anyone comes into our building at three, at four, at five, at six, students are all still there, um and teachers are working with them. Continuing with um bullying and supporting to decrease bullying within the building, we've continuously worked with a world of difference, we've had marked presentations for students, just really educating them about word choices and how they treat others. Um and one of the things that I know Mr. Neef often shares and and I agree one hundred percent is students who have meaningful relationships and connections with adults, often we don't see the increase in some of these behaviors that we observe, so we're really looking for advisory program to be restructured in the next coming year, we have some of the things we're discussing is having teachers identify some skill sets that aren't necessarily connected to a curriculum, that will allow us to build some meaningful relationships where we're not purchasing a program, but we're really looking at the individual students in our building and determining what are their greatest needs to then have that drive how we devise our advisory program moving forward. Devise our advisory program moving forward. And then in training for the LGBTQ. Again, once again, this comes from just making sure that teachers are sensitive to the needs. Of the larger community and recognizing that we do have students who are beginning to have various transitions. Um and just being mindful of how do we respond to those students and how do we make sure that they have a safe environment, that they feel comfortable. In expressing who they truly are. As we seek to move to engage the community, um we are looking to improve our information system. Our information system is where we house all of the information, parents have shared concerns with me. Regarding completing the purple forms and then having to complete multiple forms if they have more than one child and sometimes the information isn't updated. Um so we've really taken a lot of that information from parents, parents receiving phone calls or not receiving phone calls if a student is absent. And we're really gonna be spending a lot of time at the end of this academic year through the support of. Uh Meredith to really go through our system and clean it as much as we humanly can. Um and just to reach out to parents and say, this is the information that we have, is it accurate? And really spending a lot of hours going through our information system to make sure it's as accurate as possible as we move forward. We now have begun to engage in monthly attendance team meetings where we're looking at students. To capture any behaviors that we're noticing where students are missing substantial amount of time for us. A student who's missed eighteen days is substantial, that's more than ten percent of. The academic year that students are missing, so we don't wanna wait until it gets to double digits, so students who have missed. Five or less days, we start to reach out to them, are you okay, is anything we need, we can help you with as a school community? And really just having a team who's focused predominantly on looking at attendance issues, making sure if there's any glitches in the system, which we've discovered sometimes. Um that we're able to go back in and make those modifications, especially as we'll be doing the work with the information system. The use of Jupiter is how we make sure that both students as well as parents are aware of how their children are doing. Um and that they're also aware of what objectives are being covered, so parents are able to check in on Jupiter. We say within a two-week cycle, teachers will post grades. Um teachers have shared that sometimes when they're not able to do that, they will send an email out to. To parents just to keep them aware of how their student is doing within their class and. And one of the things I often say in just to parents coming in with new sixth graders is. Don't check it four times a day, um once a week is encouraged, just because. Again, the information may not be staying the same, but I know that many parents do reach out through Jupiter where they can reach out to their individual teachers as well and share concerns. Or share highlights, many parents have reached out just to say thank you so much, I'm happy to see that my child received. This on an assignment or that on assignment, um teachers also provide a lot of feedback through Jupiter as well, so it's not just you received. The grade of A, B, C, or D, these are some of the ways that you can improve as you move forward. Um for the honor roll, we really wanted to, we spent a lot of time in creating. Systems where we celebrate our middle schoolers and our high school students shared with us some concerns where they felt as though. When we transition to the high school, we don't have some of the celebrations that we've had as far as crusade of pride, et cetera. So we really worked hard to make sure that our honor roll breakfast and we're looking to see what are the mechanisms that we can put into place to let the seniors. Um who are often the ones who came to us to figure out how they can leave a lasting legacy of beginning to incorporate some of those programs as well. And what we share with them, um cause sometimes they don't, they don't see the direct correlation, I know that Jenna has done a tremendous job working with her team about having pep rallies. Um and I've heard many teachers say within the past year that these have been some of the best pep rallies because there's a sense of unity and. And I know that when we initially pushed back, they didn't really apprec- appreciate it where. We really were starting to look at how do we come together and the purpose of a pep rally is for us to come together and not talk about what's the division. Amongst the grades and the students have done a tremendous job of just having that sense of pride and camaraderie as we move forward. Um our students this year within the SAD organization has worked tremendously with Carver Cares and some of the major platforms that they've had. Um to really begin to engage the community further and engage our students and being aware of Carver Cares and some of the. The information that needs to come out and how do you make better decisions? Um our students have gone to various locations and participated in the sticker campaign, et cetera. Um and they're often putting up information around the schools to make sure other students are aware of, how do you make better choices? Um they have, you know, dream big and and I see it everywhere, it's if you come into the building, you see it above the cafeteria, you see it throughout the room. Throughout the building, um and right now, students are working to create, which is our school motto, which is be respectful. Be responsible, be the best you can be, and they're actually painting it now within the quarter quarters. Um and the PBIS as team has done a really good job of just posting positive messages and we're recognizing students. Who just randomly are seen doing good acts, just to let them know that someone is watching you and that it's okay when you do good things, so. We're really trying to get students to just make good decisions even when they don't think that someone is watching them. Continuing on, um we've worked with. The Carver Education Foundation and they provided a lot of support to some of the initiatives that we're seeking to do. One in particular is wanting to look at our Makerspace and to begin to bring in Ozobots. We actually visited a location in Bourne and we saw how excited the students were and recognize that coding is something that we really wanna start to bring. To our student population, cause many of them are are learning it on their own. Um so as a school community, we would really wanna be able to be able to tie some of those in, so I do thank. The Carver Education Foundation who's really provided support, not just in supporting the idea, but fiscally standing behind that support as well. For the PTO, um as for the parents this evening, I cannot say it enough. Please become active if you can, and I wanna thank all of the parents who do that and. And being active doesn't mean necessarily just coming to the monthly meetings, a lot of parents, I think about what we do. Um our promenade, how many parents come and get enlist hours to set up, um just this Friday. We had parents, we had two members of the school committee come out and support, so parents are always involved, but. I I I'm just never happy until I probably get a hundred percent participation because. I think it's important that parents understand it's as much their school as it is the administration, this teachers, every person who's in that building, so we really wanna. Make sure that we're continuously working to figure out how do we increase that, not just by coming to meetings, but in any aspect that we have, and I think that. Even last week, having the middle school where we had the concert where truly, I mean. Some some of the seats that were probably broken were probably people were sitting on them, um cause it was, it was really hard to find a seat. Um and that goes to the work of our boosters and the music boosters and the athletic boosters for for providing multiple opportunities and standing behind that. For when we're not fiscally able to do certain things, creating some additional means to be able to support the work we need to do. Our parents um know that they can reach out to our staff at any given point, our teachers are always available. You can leave teachers, parents can leave them a voicemail, they can email them and the teachers are quick to respond to them and just. Answer the questions they have, um I've I've truly never worked with such magnificent teachers and. I must say that oftentimes I run into parents and they say, you know, I just wanna share with you that I was dealing with this teacher and they got back to me so quickly. Um and that's just shows the concern that our p- our teachers have and how they're dedicated to the students in the building. As we enhance teaching and learning, um some of this is just highlighting, we began to really look at the frameworks and identify and start to look at our. Internal curriculum and determine, is it perfectly aligned to the curriculum that we have in the building? So Meredith has been working with us about just identifying when we say the word curriculum, what does it mean district-wide for us? Um and working with me and the department chairs and the fellow administrators to create a plan about looking at our curriculum over the next year. This year, we've looked at the frameworks we're aware of the social studies and history frameworks that. June twenty-sixth, I believe, will be when um they are ratified, if they are approved and adding that to the list to. To go ahead and move move that work forward by really looking at it and beginning that curriculum work for next year, so these slides are just telling you about. Where the frameworks stand within each of the content areas. Looking to WIDA, um we we've started to see an increase in students who are classified within our district under the ELO. Category and we're really working hard to make sure that teachers are receiving the certification. But just making sure that those students who are coming through are also able to work towards the standards where they're working towards the highest level, which is the level six. Um many of the students who we are currently working with through the thanks of Michelle who is behind me. Is really figuring out how do we not just support them academically, but how do we support them culturally as well and just being sensitive to some of their needs, so. We really looked at not just the standards, but the standards outside of that about how do we, how does our culture and community help to support those students as they move forward with their needs? For the PDC, and I know that this has been mentioned quite a bit and we really appreciate the work of Meredith and the committee. In really serving staff, it's important that as we think about big picture initiatives that we're also capturing the voice of teachers so that we're hearing. What are their needs and what are the things they're identifying that are needed as far as professional develop- professional development opportunities are? And we're really stressing out now for this year to figure out how do we embed all of that work? And recognizing that it's going to take a long period of time and sharing with staff that we recognize. What you've identified and for some of it, we'd rather do it well and really have you begin to engage in the work and practice and come back and reflect with your peers. So looking at some of the plans, we're looking over a two-year or three-year plan, just to make sure that we can target all of the areas they've identified. Um as we get prepared for NIASK, um through our accreditation process, it will be occurring in twenty twenty-three. So just not waiting to what they recommend for two years prior to begin to engage in some of that work, we're really starting now. To reflect on the work, one of the things I value about NIASK is people have different opinions about NIASK. Um I view it as an opportunity for us to have. To take a look back and to reflect on our collective school and figure out how do we consistently move from good to great. Um because these people working in in NIASK are really just focused on what is best industry practice as we move forward. Um and updating that every ten years. For our professional development calendar, we are working to update, we were front-loading. Um some of the PD days at the beginning and we're starting to have conversations now about what those days will look like. Making sure that they're the most meaningful, recognizing that teachers are coming back and how do we support their needs, um. I know that coming back, even when I taught, some of the folk I is always about, I need to get to my room, I need to set up. Um but also being able to engage in conversation with your fellow colleagues who may be teaching the same courses as you. Teachers who may have had the students last year and just being able to grab some data as you move forward in that process. Continuing with that, we've really engaged in collaborative conversation and I wanna just thank Ruby and her school for. Allowing us to engage in the conversations with the fifth grade teachers. One of the things that we recognize in having some of those vertical conversations, we also wanna start to have more of those conversations internally. Where we provide teachers within our own building the opportunity to talk via grade level, so. Um throughout the year, teachers who have students in one grade will have the opportunity to talk to teachers who may have this, who had the students last year. And teachers who will have them as they move forward. Um and and we've heard both sides of just making sure that, you know, if we've identified what strategies work well for students. Being a small district, it's critically important that we're sharing some of that data, so we can immediately set students up for success from entry. Once they come into the doors. Um and we're looking to increase the use of technology, this year we included our students in grade six, seven, and eleven. Our grade six students, we've determined that it's enough transition to not have to also manage a Chromebook. Um but they did have access in their classrooms to utilize the technology and next year we will be moving to. Provide a one full one-to-one measure. For leveraging policy and funding, um for us, it's always about how do we do the things we need to do? With the resources that we have available, um and this work is really about how do we connect. To other resources that are available to complete professional development. As well as how do we determine how do we get the most value for the professional development that we're offering? Getting feedback from teachers, looking at teachers as experts, many of our teachers in the building. Um do serve in a capacity where they're able to provide professional development and it's important that we also use them as experts as we move forward. Um and begin to also strengthen the relationships, Carver Community and a lot of the local businesses support our schools tremendously. And just continuing to build on those relationships as we move forward for resources. Um we've had this year for our Pro Start, we had our students compete and they came in fourth in the nation. Um thanks to the help of Mama Mia's and that organization, really working with our kids to develop and and hone their skill sets. And those are the ways that we really seek partnerships, it's not just fiscally, it's about additional resources that you can't always connect to funding. So that's how we really begin to move some of the work as we move forward. So at this time. Believe that is it. And I will answer any questions before we move into our plans for eighteen nineteen.
I just had a question about the, we'll go back to support safe schools. Um so we did a full implement- implementa- implementation of Alice procedures. Was that the full staff taking part in tho- those trainings?
Yes. Yes, and and everyone was included and we've also met with teachers who were absent, just to make sure that they have been trained as well. Um and one of the things, we actually had our crisis response meeting today and one of the things that we've identified in moving forward next year is. We recognize the sensitivity of this matter and we have some teachers who. Who do have concerns and we're trying to figure out how do we provide them with the supports that's necessary, we know that. Teachers are gonna do what's in the best interest of kids always, um but we really wanna make sure that because this is such a difficult topic that we've. Provide teachers with the supports necessary to make sure they're successful. Um we're also looking to, as we connect this to funding, we're looking to determine how we can ensure that. The substitutes who often come to our building are also trained and participating in some of these and those are some of the ways. That we're looking to enhance this as we move forward.
Um engaging the community, the Carver Education Foundation, you had mentioned coding. I I believe the two are related and could you elaborate a little bit on on what that was?
Sure, so um our school library media specialist um submitted a request for. Being able to afford us with Ozobots, I'm not sure if you guys are familiar with Ozobots, I had never seen them until I went to Bourne Makerspace. Um and it allows students to, the way that we saw it being implemented. Pardon me, during that day was a math teacher was utilizing it where a student, she was teaching students code. And then the students would program the code onto the Ozobots and see if they were able to perform it. Um from that, we got excited and we tried to figure out how can we make this happen, um looking at our funding. We're all aware of where we are for funding, so we were looking for alternate ways to be able to provide that opportunity. Um this week, we're also looking, myself and another teacher are going to actually go and visit. Another school where a teacher is doing coding for a program that we're looking to incorporate into our work next year. With one of the math teachers who who has seen the presentation and came back uh very excited and. Has now created this course to be able to expose our students to this, recognizing the needs as they move forward.
What grade level would that be that they were gonna incorporate?
So right now, we're looking at our eighth. Um so I'm gonna go out and visit, but we have to determine based on student needs. Looking at our schedule as that's where we are right now, just figuring out how we would build that work in and where it was.
This summer, we have three different teachers that are being trained on that in Rhode Island, so in terms of developing a course. I understand that piece of it, but they're also gonna try to embed it into ongoing instruction, so they're gonna try to kind of have a two-part.
And would the hope be that they would uh get a taste of it in the eighth grade and it would evolve going forward, so?
And that's been some of the conversations we're having, how do we get more technology embedded to the work of our students?
Great computer, great, that's great to hear. Um I I off the top of your head, PTO, athletic boosters, mu- music boosters, numbers up or down?
Numbers changing, so they're pretty pretty much the same, I I will defer to the athletic booster.
And is that about the same in mu- music also, five to seven? And what's PTO?
I would say about five to seven as well, and this year, the PTO has evolved, um oftentimes, we found that. Some of the people more critically involved, by the time they make it to their kid's senior year, um while they appreciate working with us. They too graduate with their children, um so we're really trying to figure out how do we. Um begin to incorporate more middle school parents, um that's been an area that we haven't been able to classify and we're trying to figure out how do we get them. To act- be more actively engaged, so this year, we've started to engage in conversations with the PTO about identifying. A parent rep for every single grade level is one of the things we're looking to do for the next academic year.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Moving to the school improvements plan side of this.
Yes, um so as we move to our plans for twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen. Um I'll go through and just highlight the bullets of the things that we are updating, the things that are remaining the same as we're currently still working to. Reach a level of proficiency and mastery, as well as new items in being reflective that we've now added to moving forward for our objectives. So as we look to safe and supportive schools, we're going to rev- review and revise protocols in place to ensure school safety. We wanted to go broader than just the full implementation of the Alice procedures and figure out. Even today, in our discussion with the crisis response team, we're thinking about just the arrivals and. Um parents coming in to do a drop-off and the buses coming in the same way, how do we reflect on that and determine if. It's the safest way, is there any modifications that we wanna make, so then after the meeting, several of us went out to actually take a walk around the building just to figure out how do we. Move forward with some of those ideas and then we'll be reaching. We'll be reaching out to tech, uh, transportation to figure out what is plausible in some of the ideas that we brainstormed today. Um, as we look towards the implementation of the advisory program, we're really looking this year to survey both. The teachers about some of the things that they think has worked well with advisory programs in the past, as well as some of the interests and areas that they would like to develop. And work with on students, some of, one of the models we're looking at would be. Where teachers identify three to four things that they do both in or outside of school, so. I often use the basket weaving example, so if a teacher has identified that they're really good at basket weaving, that may become something that. For a semester, they're working with students about making baskets and it may be that they then donate the baskets to organizations in the community. Um, because we find that it's meaningful to have students almost participate in how they're going to be paired with adults. With some like interest as they move forward, um, so that will be some of the work that we're conducting over this year. For our PBIS, we're consistently reviewing how do we embed that into our work. Um, today, we, one of the things that was discovered is we previously used to have assist and alert meetings. Where we would meet with students and identify students who we feel are at risk academically, socially, emotionally. Um, in reflecting on PBS, we're now going to have two assist meetings because alert just seems concerning. Um, and our focus is really about assisting students both at the middle school and assisting students at the high school, so those are some modifications that we're making. Um, we wanna enhance our plan and programs that support social and emotional needs. Again, I spoke earlier about our transition program, we also have a program. Um, that's an alternative program, recognizing that a traditional school setting isn't an ideal setting for every student. Um, so we also have that program and we're looking to continuously revise and enhance that program to support the students who that some of their needs as well. As we move to in community engagement, we're looking to develop and this has remained the same over the past few years. Is to develop and analyze events, um, teachers and parents provide a lot of feedback. Um, parents have shared and we're considering, uh, making some modifications in. How do we do principals awards, cuz parents have shared the concern, um, with us about. We recognize it for four terms, but because term four ends on the last day of school. We recognize that at the half a day, students and uh they're ready to go, um, so how do we figure out how do we move that work forward, so really. Looking at identifying the first, the three terms at the beginning of the year and identifying a cutoff point, how are they doing at that point, recognizing. That if a student is successfully maintaining a a average or a B average that. They're not gonna have a drastic drop within the last four days, um, so we often tend to have our crusader pride towards the end of the year, so recognize them where it is. Um, again, and that comes from feedback from parents, just sharing concerns, feeling as though we're not recognizing that last term. And knowing that it's critically important to their child and that their child has worked hard for the entire year, um. And being able to publicly recognize those things, we do recognize. Our students and we have a separate event for honor roll students, parents have shared they would like to. Um, have that be part of the Crusader Pride event, as well as we're trying to figure out how do we manage that. Uh, because we do provide a lot of awards during that timeframe and how do we make sure that, again, those students who've worked so hard to maintain those grades are also recognized. Uh, is some of the conversations we're having as we move forward for the next academic year. Continuing the development and implementation of substance abuse, um, and mental health programs within our building. Um, continuing with S-Bert, continuing with the partnership with Carver Cares. And Carver Cares comes into, and they have a school base as well as. A meeting with the community at in the evening and really just continuing to strengthen those and make sure that we're teaching our kids through. The use of our students who participate inside, how to make better choices. Um, and to in- increase, and I spoke to this earlier, the horizontal and vertical conversations. Making sure that teachers are having some time where they can talk about. In our sixth grade, we do provide teaming, so teachers are able to engage and bridge discussion about how their students are doing, um. And fiscally, we wish we could provide teams for every single grade level because we recognize how important that work is. So we wanna figure out how do we utilize some of our professional development opportunities to be able to provide some of those conversations. While they won't happen once each cycle, even having them happen once or twice throughout the year is gonna definitely be. Um, value added to the work that we're doing. Moving to how we elevate teaching and learning, this is new, um, providing professional development. In line with teacher feedback and student need, um, in the past, we've, we've really worked hard to. Align our professional development to our school-wide goals, our teachers have really participated and we wanna recognize that when we're asking them to participate in survey. That their voice does matter, so as we look towards developing our calendar for the next academic year, as far as professional development. It's critically important and we're looking to identify what are the top areas that they've identified that they would like supported. Um, our teachers have been working over the past several years on the SAMR model, um, and we've seen a growth in our teachers moving from. Within the SAMR model from the substitution to the augmentation and we wanna continuously support them as they move to the uh through the other two tiers of the program. Moving to creating a vision of. Elevating, we really wanna move to creating a vision of the graduate, um, this is work that. We've started to engage in the conversations, when our students are crossing the stage, what do we wanna ensure that they have? Not just content knowledge, but we wanna make sure that they're able to think critically, that they are able to problem solve. Uh, because the world that they're heading into are going to pose new challenges to them that they may not have been exposed to, so how do we reflect on that? Earlier today, Scott shared, um, what we reviewed collectively and. It made me reflect on as we think about our vision, we wanna make sure that they are empowered learners, that they are critical members and citizens within. Not just their community locally, but nationally in that conversation. Um, so the whole staff will be working on revising where we have for our core values and beliefs to really envision. What do we want our students and feel comfortable about about when we see them on. That Saturday in June, the first Saturday in June and they shake our hands, we know we're confident that they're, they have demonstrated these skill sets. Um, to increase the utilization of technology for the teachers, recognizing that the teachers and students are both continuously growing, technology is something that. No one can really master because it's changing exponentially, so just making sure that we're exposing our students and our teachers to best practices as we move forward. And continuing to collaborate and revise the curriculum, which I spoke to earlier with the new frameworks that are coming out. In history and social studies, but re- re-looking at all of them that exist in all of the other content areas. As we move towards leveraging leadership policy and funding, really assessing professional development through. District support through that funding source, but also looking for outside funding sources and grant opportunities that may exist. I'm looking for professional development opportunities that don't have cost, um, they are out there and they exist, so how do we really tap into that availability? Establishing and maintain partnerships with local businesses. Recognizing that this work is so critical, that we need the entire Carver community to support this work. The work that we're doing is truly the future, so how do we make sure that everyone is supporting this work as we move forward? And then last one is just to review and revise school procedures that exist. And just make sure that they're clear and transparent to all that serve within the building, as well as to parents as we move forward. And that's some of the work we've done already through the handbook committee when we presented to you last month, so. A lot has happened and a lot is going to continue to happen, um, so I'll take any questions that you guys may have at this time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Janelle, thank you, uh, Ruby, and and I'll and I'll just tie it back to, you know, so. Janelle Ruby really spent a lot of time outlining a lot of things that happened within our schools in support of our educational blueprint. And that work is being done by teachers, professionals, the administration, really the entire community. But it all ties back to these four core objectives of supporting safe schools, engaging the community. Enhancing teaching and learning, um, leveraging leadership policy and funding, so ultimately that we're cultivating empowered learners and responsible citizens. Uh, that that's what we wanna do, so I wanna just thank everybody for their presentations this evening and, uh, if you're, if you're ready, we'll move on to our next topic.
Thank you both, that was very good, thank you very much.
You appreciate the the format shift in the traditional school improvement plan?
In our school council, um, having the parents who work on it, they always be scared of me beginning of this year. How excited they are and that they finally feel like they understood it, I think so.
And it's and it's clearly, you did a very good job presenting that clearly, like, there's a lot of information in that, in that one page, but. I think from our perspective, the format is is much appreciated also. Thank you.
And, uh, monthly building update, we won't, we won't have a lot of, a lot more of these monthly building updates, cuz soon we'll have a completed building. Uh, so I just have a couple of highlights to hit on today. There's there's trees out in front of that building, uh, you know, obviously, we we maintain to stay on time and on budget. Uh, you know, so you have the monthly report, Meredith put it up, I'm not gonna go through the monthly report. Uh, the only thing I'm gonna highlight from the monthly report is we're still at this time have fifty-three percent of our contingency available. Uh, so we're, I believe it's worked out that we are, uh. Eighty-two percent done with the project, including the outside, the fields, the parking lot. And we've only used forty-seven percent of our contingency, so there's still over a million dollars left in the contingency fund. There's not a lot of places we could run into problems, knock on wood, uh, the, you know, obviously, we could run into issues with abatement. Because we're gonna be concerned when we get into those two buildings as, you know, we've, there's been a lot of pre-worked out in terms of what a, what a bait ministers we could run into, hopefully don't run into any. Uh, but, you know, financially, we're just in a good place in the project, uh, so the project's on time, on budget, which is a great place for us to be. Uh, and it's gonna, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a great building, um. The other thing I wanted to, Brad's gonna talk a little bit about, just give us a quick, a quick update on our process of transitioning the buildings. Uh, cuz we're coming to the close of school, we've been talking about this a lot, uh, but school closes on June twenty-second. And then the next week, we have to transition our current two buildings, uh, over to the construction company and start to get ready to move into our new building. So Brad will touch on that quickly.
Yeah, so twenty-second, I think is gonna be a major packing day, um, obviously the last day of school. Um, I'm hopeful we have all of our boxes in place, we're over our two thousand, um, number that we shot for. Um, the company, the movie company only owns two thousand, so between facilities, um, and myself and VPW. Will will carry over the excess over two thousand, but we're hopeful it's just right around that two or three hundred mark, um.
Literally, you're gonna carry him over or?
Uh, we have, we have Ben's actually bought, thankfully that will be able to, uh, utilize, but yes, that's the alternative, but we run out.
So that's happening on Saturday and Sunday.
I'll be on, the the box move is on Saturday and Sunday. The goal is they're gonna bring a big enough crew on Saturday, work a full day and be done, that's the goal, if they have to come back on Sunday, they do own that portion, but. I'm assuming they're gonna wanna get it done on Saturday and enjoy their time off on Sunday. The actual, um, removal of equipment and, um. Of the existing building, that is gonna happen from the twenty-fifth, which is Monday all the way to the twenty-ninth. The goal of that is to have that project done by the twenty-seventh, um, along with that, on the twenty-fifth, we have our copiers moving over. Um, and we also have, one thing we were able to do is a lot of the old cafeteria equipment, don't ask me why it was just sitting there, but it's not been operating for. Ten plus years, a few items, I was actually able to trade that in and get, um, a piece of equipment that we needed that was not part of the bid. Um, a new warmer, so we traded old existing equipment that had no value to us, I got a brand new warmer, um, so I'm happy about that. And outside of that, really, that's the bad one, uh, we're hopeful everything goes smoothly and, um.
There was a lot of question the other day about, uh, when the actual demolition of the building itself.
So we do not have an official date of demolition, but I've told people the other day, we'll talk about that in a second. But I, what I told people was, you know, we have a weekly construction meeting, uh, but I probably won't know official demolition till the week before. Uh, but once I have that date, I wanna, but I will put it out to the community, uh, obviously, the community can't come on site and watch the demolition. Uh, but if they wanna try to view the demolition from some other, you know, across the street at. Uh, don't get noticed and get a coffee or or whatever they choose to do, a lot of people have shown interest in saying they wanna see the front building come down. Or at least come by for a couple minutes and watch, uh, so I said that once I know, uh, the exact date that's gonna occur. Um, I'll put that information out to the community, um, I guess, right now, the estimate that I've been given is probably second week in July. But we'll come up with an official date, uh, when they're gonna actually start to claw the bu- claw the building apart and I'll let the community know that. Um, you know, the other thing, the the subcommittee for the grand opening committee, we held our fond farewell on Saturday. That was a tremendous event, it was an open house from three to six, uh, had a great turnout from the community, what I was really impressed by was. The turnout was really, uh. It was, it was a cross-section of the community, it was diverse, uh, it was from. Students who are currently in the school, like, you guys are gonna come to school Monday, you don't need to come on Saturday to look at your classroom, uh, but they did, uh, to obviously. Our most senior members of the community, uh, so it really was a diverse representation of the town of Carver, that was really impressive to see. And I, in my, from my perspective and from the feedback we've gotten, I actually think the event exceeded expectations, I was just really, uh. Proud of how, of what happened and I wanna give a shout out to Ruby and her administrative staff for helping organize that and and clearly, obviously, the elementary PTO. Uh, the elementary PTO played a huge role in the organization of that event as well, uh, so I think that was really a positive community event. And we got a lot of good feedback on. Um, last thing I have this evening on the building is that we do have two time-lapse videos, and I thought they're each, each one's under a minute. Uh, there's two perspectives on how the buildings come up, uh, one, one of the time-lapse videos is from the construction trailer, one's from the elementary school. Uh, so one, one, one camera's on the current elementary school, one camera is on the construction trailer, so it gives you two different perspectives of how the buildings got up. Uh, this one's forty-nine seconds, so we'll watch our two time-lapse videos, uh, when Meredith hits the button. There's more cloudy days than sunny days, it seems like. This is obviously the perspective from the, uh, this is from the elementary school, I should have said that in the beginning. So this is, this is the cameras on the current elementary school building, the back building. It's two years of work in a minute. And then we have the other view, this is from the constru- this is from the, uh, this is from the construction trailer. And there was trees. So I don't know, I I don't know if the members, I don't know if the members of the building committee wanna add any pieces in. Uh, obviously, as we, in our, our next meeting is up to August and as, uh. You know, obviously, we'll give a kind of an overview at that meeting of what the grand opening's gonna look like. I think we'll get that date out to the community again, so it's Wednesday, August twenty-ninth, five o'clock, uh, is the grand opening ribbon-cutting ceremony. Um, and and we have a meeting prior to that on the twentieth, uh, so we'll kinda go through the agenda for what's gonna happen that evening. Uh, as the subcommittee is, uh, finalizing those plans, but it's gonna, uh, our goal is to involve the entire community. Uh, the hi- we're gonna have chorus students from each, from each school, uh, performing that night, we're gonna have the band performing. Uh, reach out to local restaurants to help support us with, um, food and really, our goal is to have it be a just a. A really a representative event for the community of Carver, um, so that's all I have on the, a monthly building update, I don't know if the members of the building committee wanna add any.
I'd like that, I I Scott gave a rough estimate earlier of his, his thoughts about the font, somewhere between six and eight hundred. And it, and it was really diverse, I think the, the opening is gonna be a very different environment and a very different experience. There was a lot of talk there the other day about lunches in the front gym and where the cafeteria was in the original building. And, uh, and and some sadness about leaving all that behind, but but it was a fantastic turnout, I'd also like to, uh, thank. The culinary department and chef for the food, they did a fantastic job, uh, every, it was, they, they walked around with finger foods and everybody. You know, wherever you were, there was always something available, it was delicious and everybody had a great time. Um, I think we're, I think we're gonna see a very different scenario with the, with the grand opening of the new school. Um, and hopefully the numbers will, will increase with that one too, but it was a great show and and. Thanks to the PTO and everybody involved in, in making that event happen the way it did, cuz it was a, it was a really nice day, turned out to be a beautiful day.
Hey, hey, how's our monthly building update? Uh, so moving to field update, we have a presentation from, uh, from Mr. Brothers, from Mr. Schultz, from Mr. Seantoff. Uh, you know, there obviously, uh, there's been some concerns in terms of field usage within the community, uh, cuz we have a lot of work going on. Uh, we have, uh, we have a building project, we have an accelerated repair project, now we have a new field project. Uh, and that's had an impact on some of the field usage within the community, um, so we've asked, uh, Mike and Dave and Brad. Uh, and that's had an impact on some of the field usage within the community, um, so we've asked, uh, Mike and Dave and Brad, um, Mike and David, to weigh in and kinda give us a sense of, uh, what's our plan over the next two to three years. And I guess my only summary of their plan, which they're gonna outline right now, is that, uh, I think in, in two years, this community is gonna be in a great position in terms of field, field availability. Between what we're gonna be able to do with the middle high school complex, with the new fields that are coming on board at the elementary school. Uh, we might be two to three years away, I think in two to three years, we're just gonna be in a much better place, uh, than we currently are. Uh, so with that, I invite, it's just Dave and Mike, who are gonna, uh, talk a little about where we are in the fields.
Good evening, so, um, when Mr. Neve asked us to, to take a look at this and, and kinda put together a presentation, uh, I thought it'd be a good time for us to sort of do a quick overview of the facility. Uh, more importantly, the amount of use that it gets and some of the components in managing the site. It's a twenty-six acre site, um, that gets a tremendous amount of activity and use in the community, which I think is great. But it also comes with some, uh, some issues that we struggle sometimes to manage it all at once. Um, the overview of the facility, the first slide, um, really just outlines, um, we got these photos from Activitas. Um, but it outlines sort of our, our footprint. I don't think people always realize how fortunate we are, uh, as a middle high school and a community, certainly for me as an athletic director, that the majority of our stuff is on site. We go to a number of facilities on the South Shore where the varsity game, baseball game may be in one place, but the JV game is off across town. So we are very fortunate to have this, um, this site, uh, but with that comes obviously some management and, and use of the field. So predominantly, um, our soccers play up on the, what we call the Pond Street Fields. Um, we've got a middle field directly behind the, uh, the gymnasium, which we call our practice football field, but it is a multi-purpose field. We've got our two softball fields, the two baseball fields. Uh, and obviously the track and field, um, complex. Also within that is our tennis courts and then our gyms, which get a, a fair amount of use. So, um, again, I think we're fortunate as a school district to have everything on site when the teams roll in. Um, you know, most towns are impressed with the fact that they can be here, everything's on site. And, um, you know, for the most part, our facilities are, are, I think are, are, are in good shape. Um, you know, I, I, in terms of capital improvements since two thousand and six, um, sometimes it doesn't stand out as well, um, but there's been a fair amount of, uh, improvements again. Um, you know, it's all relative to the amount of money we have and the resources that we use, but, I thought it would be a good opportunity to list some of the things that we've been able to do since two thousand and six. And then just sort of highlight where the funding's coming from. I mean, there's a number of different sources that we use to, to sort of do upgrades and, and take care of our facility. So one of the first years I was there, we, we were able to get involved in a, uh, CPC project to redo our tennis courts, which needed to be done, they were original. Um, so we're fortunate there. Um, uh, recently, we've been able to reseed one of the Pond Street Fields, which is looking in really good shape. We've spent, um, a fair amount of money on the baseball fields last year, between batting cages and renovation with some sod, and repairs, and again, if you're looking at the revenue there, it comes from the donations from the town, um, uh, I'm sorry, the capital money from town, it comes from donations from the booster clubs. Uh, and then the work of the resources between the DPW and groundskeeper. Um, yes, we do have a groundskeeper, I think we should make that clear publicly, that there is a groundskeeper on site, uh, who does sometimes have to split duties, um, with the work of DPW, but he is on site for our, managing our games and our, and our facility as best he can. Um, softball batting cage was a donation, and then we were able to get some funding to install it. Um, we had a donation about three or four years ago to have football goalposts installed, uh, on our practice, uh, football field, which also serves as a JV field for us as well. Um, we all know about the gym floor project, which is a capital project, which, um, that and the turf, uh, track and field project have been on the capital plan since I started in two thousand and six. Those are original requests, so, um, it wasn't a surprise that these, these areas were sort of struggling and, and falling apart. They've been on there for several years. Um, through some capital money, we're able to, to replace a lot of bleachers and benches around the facility, uh, which are outdated. Uh, and then our booster club has always been supportive of us in terms of managing, uh, is small projects. Uh, many of you know that when I came on in two thousand and six, they had just finished the concession building outside. Uh, but inside, they've done the indoor concession stand, which also serves as our school store. And they've replaced our, um, they were able to build a fitness center in, um, the, off the high school gym and help with the, uh, athletic trainer center. These are all things that not every school, um, has, and we have, we are fortunate to be able to, through a number of resources, um, put together some things that the town and the, the students benefit greatly.
How's the, how's the new floor like going over as far as?
The new floor is, the new floor is great, uh, it's a great floor. I think there's some, uh, misconceptions in terms of managing it. We have pretty strict, um, requirements, and Dave can speak to this, from the manufacturer of the wood floor company, that says they do not want water on that floor. I think over time, the urethane base that builds up protects the wood and the, and the, and the cracks in the floor. But people, um, want us to mop that on a regular basis or run a machine over it that drops water on it, which is, is gonna void our warranty. So really, we're limited in terms of how we are able to maintain and clean that floor through sweeping and some, some drying lock stuff, but to put a big mop on there and scrub it down is not something that the, that the manufacturer wants us to do for warranty. Which is why we're constantly saying water in the gym only, we don't want gum, we don't want food, we don't want people that are using it, putting tape on the floor. All these restrictions to the floor, which is, you know, again, hard to manage. Um, so those are the improvements that we've done over the years with, with multiple resources and, um, there have been other requests. Um, you know, we've, and I'll get to some of the other requests later on. It's not that we don't want to do these requests, it's that funding does not allow. Um, current facility use, I thought I would break the current facility use down between, uh, sort of the middle high school needs, uh, and then the town rec needs. Um, you know, uh, uh, we've got a, 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 a full middle high school sports program, uh, eight through twelve, uh, I just listed the fall sports, the winter sports and the spring sports. And then we do run an intramural program, um, year-round, thirty weeks, Tuesdays and Thursdays. Um, so for the most part, we're, for in-season, we're using our facilities from two fifteen to typically if we're outdoors, uh, five, six o'clock. Uh, indoors, we, if we're running our double basketball practices and our gymnastics and wrestling, you know, we're going two fifteen to, to seven o'clock, eight o'clock, depending on games. Um, and then the, to the town rec side of things, you've got, um, the boys and girls basketball program, men's league soccer, pop Warner Wrestling, and youth softball, and, and there is some baseball that's being used. So we finish up our athletic events and our contests during the week. And then on the, on the weekends and after us at night, all these groups come in. So managing this field use is a, uh, really a full-time job. Just making sure that, you know, someone is here to, to let them in the gyms and over the weekends, um, emptying trash, managing site issues during the, during the day. I'll give you a good example, yesterday, we had an MIA tournament softball game. And there had to have been over five hundred people at one point on that, on that property yesterday. Um, so as you kinda process that, there's a decent amount of wear and tear on our fields, but also, the groundskeeper that's coming in this morning spent a fair amount of time putting that place back together. Um, there were cars parked wherever they wanted to park, there were trash barrels overflowing, there's a lot of stuff that goes on with that amount of use. Um, which takes away obviously from what other things may have been planned for that day, so, um, you, you add a rain day and you add a couple of things that happen or an, an event that happens, and his schedule can get bogged down like anybody else's. So managing a site like that has always been a challenge, um, and it's something that we continue to sort of work on. Um, and struggle with, I mean, there's, there's a lot of use on those fields on the weekends after hours. Um, and it's going to obviously do some wear and tear on our gym floors and our grass and, and so forth. Um, I know I'm going faster, I don't, if you have a question, you can certainly jump in and, um, ask at any time. Um, in terms of the new, the new complex, um, obviously, that's gonna do a few things for us. The new complex is gonna allow us to, um, sort of move people into a different space, so, for, for the most part, when we were using the, the written initial slide I showed you with all of our facilities, um, we did not currently use the stadium, I call it the stadium field, uh, for a lot of activities. It was focused on games, uh, sometimes you had a practice down there, but we really didn't use that space too much, cause we tried to protect the grass. And to be honest, a lot of times it was underwater. Um, this new complex is gonna allow us to start to transition teams down there, um, for practices and activities, and eventually get into a cycle of closing down fields. As we kinda proceed through this cycle here. And I'm gonna share with you a slide of what we think, uh, working with Dave and Brad makes a lot of sense. Um, currently, right now, we started to do this by closing Pond Street. So we have Pond Street, I call Pond Street one closest to Pond Street, and Pond Street two is up on the hill, which is gonna be shut down for the construction project. But we had no other choice at this point because of overuse, but to shut down the Pond Street Field last year. So we did shut it down, we did not let people go on it, we sliced seeded it, we fertilized it, got the irrigation going, and it's in great shape right now. It's in excellent shape, and that'll become for us a game field slash practice field, um, for the fall of two thousand and eighteen. Um, but the new complex is gonna allow us to shift teams down there, and then free up a field so that rotation of letting fields sit and rest and recuperate, uh, will become more of a, a routine for us. To be honest, when I came on board, there was that cycle of shutting down fields. We'd alternate Pond Street one, Pond Street two, and we'd shut down fields. But what happened was, because of the increase in activities in town with flag football and some of the programs that were increasing, which is a positive for us, um, and the number of programs, the size of programs growing, if we had shut down fields earlier, there wouldn't be a place for people to go. We had Purchase Street and we had Forest Street, which I've worked with the rec department to try to get that up and running for a smaller field for small sided games. So there wasn't a lot of options for us, so what, the result was, you know, overuse ultimately. And, um, you know, there are other factors which we'll share with you, which involve like a budget issue with fertilization and so forth, but, this complex is gonna allow us to start going back to a cycle that makes sense for us, uh, without overusing this space. Um, but I think that because we went turf, uh, and we can follow a maintenance plan, this is gonna be our best plan for us. Um, I know some people are asking about a timeline. So there is a timeline that Green Acres has supplied with Activitas. Uh, I believe that link should work, but it might bring you to my Google Docs, but there's a whole, um,
It won't lie in.
It won't lie you in, okay, I can share it with you. But basically, I summarized the timeline for you, um, just with some sort of highlights. There's a lot of stuff in the timeline from the, it's very broken down to like when the electrical's going in and so forth, but, ultimately, these are the highlights, um, you know, obviously, we broke ground in, in May of two thousand and fourteen. Um, but the bulk of the stripping of the soil and drainage is all taking place now. Uh, they're starting to put in utilities, um, and starting to run some lines and drainage through June and July. Um, the masonry foundations and walls are gonna be going in, starting within two weeks and going through August. Um, mid-July through September, they're gonna be working on fencing and sort of outlining the perimeter of the site. Um, turf and track will take place August through September. I was talking to one of the engineers today, and I thought like turf was the last thing you put in, like the carpet in your house. And he said, no, we wanna work from the inside out, and they're gonna start, you know, probably August, they start putting that turf down and working inside out. Uh, irrigation goes down for the perimeter stuff in September, obviously, site furnishings, uh, which would be, um, probably finishing lights and fences and pathways and so forth, and then landscape touch-up with a completion date of ten-four. Um, I think they're on schedule. Uh, A- Activitas is, and Green Acres, both so far have been great companies to work with. Activitas is very responsive, you've got a question, they're on it, they get back to you. Um, so I think we're in good hands, but that's a timeline, I'll give you a more detailed timeline, I can share it with you. Um, but that's a timeline on the project. Um, and I, and I think again, it's gonna benefit us a lot in terms of managing our site use. Annual funds and standard maintenance plan, so, you know, we, a lot of the issues that happened at, and we've talked about this probably multiple times in this forum and different forums, but a lot of the issues in which the fields kind of, went, um, sort of not in great shape for a period of time, was obviously with the well issue, and the wells let go and, and we had a problem with the wells, which then required us to get new wells, rewire them. Um, installation of the septic system.
We have to remind people that us, we didn't water the fields for two years.
Right.
So if you don't provide any water for two years, that's gonna be a problem.
But before that, I think one of the bigger things, uh, is that we got away from a regular fertilization program. It became something that we needed to cut in the budget in order to save other things. Um, you know, what I've learned through talking to people, Activitas and people that do turf management, we've had some people out there assess the site, is that when you stop fertilizing your lawn, the root base isn't as strong. It will not tolerate the heat without fertilization. And so we would, it was the, it was a perfect storm, we stopped fertilizing, so our roots were weak. We lost the fertile, the water system, um, and then we had a, a really hot summer. And, you know, we basically fried that lawn, and we, we really couldn't do much about it. Had we kept the fertilization plan going all along, I think it would have helped us out. Um, I think people forget that we lost a portion of that irrigation system as part of the septic plant, so the septic plant tore through a good part of that, um, right side going up to the ball fields, which, um, basically wiped out the entire irrigation from the septic plant to the two Pond Street Fields, and then when the well let go, it was just, we had nothing up there. Um, we, we were be, able to irrigate the other way, but we had a break, break there, so that, there's a lot of factors that played into that. But the fertilization plan being eliminated did not help, um, and then the irrigation as well.
Let me just jump in, just to clarify, we did not have existing irrigation wells. The irrigation that was previously done on the fields actually ran off, the school had one well. So it supplied the potable water and the irrigation. Um, DEP came in and did a sanitary survey three years ago and did not want us to do that anymore when a, uh, lead and copper in, uh, in drinking water became a big issue because of Flint, Michigan. And they, uh, basically made the ruling that because they were worried that because we were irrigating, um, we were taken away from our corrosion control treatment plant, so they shut down our irrigation on the existing fields. Um, so that wasn't a, a failure of existing wells, it was just that DEP stepped in and said, you can no longer irrigate. Um, and we were given notice that day, and that was the end of irrigation. Um, that also ended up being one of the driest, hottest summers we've had in a long time, um, so I just wanna clarify that.
So, uh, the, that, on that slide, uh, Meredith, if you go, uh, up one more.
Yeah, go back, yeah.
Yeah. The, um, the current budget that we have is, is, uh, I believe twenty-six thousand dollars for field maintenance and fertilization, uh, without irrigation. Um, below is basically wha- what we believe it would cost to properly maintain the fields, which would be thirty thousand dollars in applications and fertilization, and then aerate and overseed, another twenty-five. Um, if the other link didn't work, then this one probably doesn't either, but if there's a field maintenance plan that I got from Activitas, I just asked them what, what does a typical maintenance plan look like on an annual basis, and that includes, um, uh, I mean, if you're gonna do it professionally, it's a soil test each year, it's core aeration in, in May and September. Uh, it's overseeding in May and June, possibly late October. Uh, it's slice seeding, high water areas, uh, uh, high wear areas, I'm sorry, uh, in September and October. It's top dress with sand and compost in May and September, apply fertilizer five times a year. May, June, July, August, Sep- uh, May, June, July, September, October. Uh, apply lime in May, um, herbicides and gra- crabgrass control, which is something that we, we can't always do. And then a grub control, so that's a, that's a maintenance plan for maintaining. And then a grub control, so that's a, that's a maintenance plan for maintaining fields. And a a regulation sized field is is somewhere around twenty-five to thirty grand uh a year to do that. Again, that's one of the reasons we sort of lean towards the turf field as well is that to properly maintain these fields. You're looking at uh fifty, sixty grand a year and that doesn't always include top dressing and and some of the other components that they require. Again, it's not something that we would not want to do, I mean, I'd love to say all of our fields look like Pond Street. But the reality is between the overuse that we get and the the number of activities going on in town, the number of fields we have. Uh and the budget that calls to do it properly, you know, those are some of the struggles that we face. Going back to um the turf, uh there is some, and I'll I'll share with you the turf maintenance plan and what that looks like. But I think that there's obviously savings in using the turf uh field, as I mentioned before, and being able to sort of shift teams around. Recommendation, recommended restoration and continued maintenance plan. You know, the irrigation on Pond Street is up and running. We we're we're hoping to reinstate five applications fertilization plan uh for the entire school, uh the entire complex. One of the things that we're going to need to do uh over time is plan for irrigation on the baseball softball fields. Currently Pond Street is irrigated, the um practice football field is irrigated. And at the time, the old stadium field was irrigated. There is no water going out to either softball or baseball. So we're again, if it's not fertilized well and we get to a hot summer, those fields traditionally brown up. They will come back in the fall and the spring, but in the summer, they will turn brown. And if people are on them and using them, they're going to damage the roots and 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 the wear areas will become more prevalent. Which in turn then requires us to do more overseeding and it's it's a s- a process of of uh of continued wear. So you know, I've got requests all summer long and it's again, you juggle this between, we gotta let everybody use the facility, we're gonna eventually shut it down in places and let's repair. Um irrigation would definitely help that, but it's a fair amount of money and something we need to budget for. These are some other things in terms of planning, uh I think sometimes people think that we don't think of these things. It's just financially, we have to find ways, again, like I showed earlier, either through boosters or donations or be creative. But um replacing all the backstops and fences, um obviously those have have been original and they're starting to bend and bow. Uh it's something that we really need to look into doing. Allocating funding for a standard maintenance plan, we talked about that. You know, there's some other equipment we need on the facility and then gym floor refinishing annually for both gyms. Uh it's actually recommended, a lot of schools do this, they'll refinish the floors over the summer and then they'll refinish the floors again over Thanksgiving break. In preparation for basketball season. Uh it's not something that we have um money for at this point, we we tend to just o- do one floor a year. And then ob- obviously the rotation of fields, the next slide is sort of a, just a a quick little spreadsheet of what we thought would make sense moving forward. Based on what's available and being able to still provide enough space for the community. Um obviously, in the fall of two thousand eighteen, we'll open the stadium field. We're planning on shutting down the baseball field if we can at the end of the summer, going into the fall. And that outfield getting sliced seeded, fertilized and being shut down. That'll probably happen more than more than likely after the field hockey season, cause that's a field they use up there. We're looking to shut down the softball fields at the end of the spring, uh at the end of the summer in the fall and do the same thing. Slice seed those fields and fertilize them. And again, hopefully the, there are obviously weeds there, the weeds will die out in the fall and when they come back and they grow through, the grass will fill in. The practice football field, we would re- we would reseed and close for an entire year, cause I think that needs to be redone and re-leveled. So that's gonna be a fall to fall close. Um and then Pond Street would be uh Pond Street one will reopen, it's gonna reopen in the fall of two thousand eighteen and then two thousand twenty. We're gonna have to start this cycle again and make sure we take care of it. Pond Street two, the upper field is gonna be closed for a period of time, uh it's become a staging area for us for the for the project. And eventually that loom will will make its way out. Again, with these closings of fields and reorganization of places. There is gonna be an impact for the community in terms of youth programs. And it's something we, I work with the town group, town groups quite a bit to sort of support them, but it's something we're gonna have to make sure that they're aware of and work with them on. Again, as Mr. Neef said, you know, I think in two years, when the fields um at the elementary school are in. And had a year to grow, just cause they're in doesn't mean we can use them, I mean, they say it should grow for a year. So in two years, I think we'll be in a much better place and we can start to spread out our youth groups and start this rotation. But you know, I think there's a lot of factors that play into the the size of the community and the programs that we're running. I mean, flag football has over three hundred kids, I think that's great, with that comes a lot of activity and games. There are some requests that we've received from the community. Again, it's it's a matter of funding and being able to uh allocate resources to this. But there is a request for both softball and baseball dugouts. There is uh, last year, we were able to get some fencing on the varsity softball field, which actually acts as like little buffers for the bench. I was able to repurpose some fencing when they tore down the fence for the, in preparation for the track and field project. So I was able to secure some fencing and some posts, so we are gonna put the same barriers for for the JV softball field. So there's a fence up blocking like two panels, the benches for the JV softball field. But there's been a request for years for baseball softball dugouts, um I put a request forward to the CPC in two thousand twelve. They chose not to fund it, they had other programs going on, uh but it's something we've obviously looked to do, um but it's a funding issue. And then there are some things we got like fence, field hockey and soccer, that's the things we need, but they came out of the the new track project. Yeah, oh, the other one is the is the other, is that there continues to be a request from the community to put fencing in both the baseball outfield. And the softball outfield, um because they want a barrier for home runs and out of bounds and so forth. It's something we cannot put permanently there because we use those as multi-purpose fields. There are portable fences that you can put out there, uh but it is a quite a bit of work. And since we use those fields for flag football and soccer uh on the weekends, it would be a a quite a bit of work to do. And they're fairly expensive, they're portable posted um structures. Turf maintenance, uh I've never owned a turf or worked on a turf, so I'm gonna tell you what the manufacturer has told us. That's just a quick little um summary from the, I I shared that with you as well and if not, I'll get it to you. There is a fourteen-page document that came from the manufacturer of the turf um company that we're buying the turf from. And some of the things that um I was able to pull out of that in terms of information that we need to be aware of. Is the, you know, there's a, there's obviously a suggested maintenance schedule. In terms of the litter removal, uh brushing uh heavily used areas, running the machine over it weekly. Uh resurfacing, uh total surface brushing, getting rid of debris, uh seam inspections and so forth. But reading the document, what what really stood out for me was that in order to be in compliance with the warranty. There's a few things you should make sure that you're doing uh on a weekly basis, on a monthly basis and then on a yearly basis. They say that for every ton hours of play, you you spend some time inspecting the turf. The turf uh is rolled out and is sewn together, uh all of our lines are stitched in. The center logo is stitched in, so there's a lot of places where you need to sort of police and make sure there's not any damage going on. So weekly inspections of the playing surfaces, um I think we're gonna need to get a lot of signs. That tell you exactly what can and cannot be on the surfaces. It talks about if you're sweeping it, you can't get oil on the tur- surfaces and your machines can't be leaking on it. It's one of the reasons why I went to a newer machine with the the ability to pull this equipment. It talks a lot about what they want on there in terms of food and drink, obviously nothing but water. Any of these things can alter the material that is down. Acceptable footwear, there's gonna be information about acceptable footwear, I mean, you can wear cleats, but you can't wear spike cleats like you'd wear on baseball. We have sort of mats that go across the the track that we're gonna have to continually sort of shift around through entrance points, so we're not wearing an area out. But they talk about high traffic areas, they talk about inspecting um, like I said, areas that are potentially. Maybe falling apart, pulling away from the curbing on the sides. So there's a fair amount of information that we're looking at this document, trying to pull out and create this sort of weekly or monthly log. That we're gonna create and there's there's templates there, but we're all gonna get trained when they put this down with the manufacturer. And then um we're gonna have to come up with a plan through the DPW and through the groundskeeper on how we maintain and manage. This facility and this site. I have taught, I have spoken to several athletic directors from Dexbury, Cohasset, Noah that have turf. And the process that they use weekly and monthly to manage these facilities. Again, we're not always there, this facility is gonna get used over the weekend. I can only put signs up and request people to follow them, but if I use the gym floor as example, we will come in on a. Monday morning and there's Gatorade bottles spilled over and there's stains and gum and so forth. So you know, as much as we wanna maintain the wear and tear in our building, when we're using it, we need the support of the community to sort of. Support that and help with that. And then finally, um. Permanent ongoing ground maintenance and um facility use. You know, we 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 try, and I say try, we try to cut the lawn twice a week this time of year. The fall and spring, obviously it's growing season, so it's gonna, it's gonna jump out of the ground. We typically cut on a Monday, Tuesday and then we try to cut again at the end of the week. Depending on 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 the need of the lawn being cut. I don't think it's okay to to show up with your own lawnmower and cut, I think that you'd have to rely on us to do that. If it's not cut, you can certainly call us and and check in and we'll we'll let you know, but it's like anything else. I mean, sometimes an emergency comes on a Friday when we're cutting and I have to prep a field and we had a water break and we're fixing irrigation. And the field doesn't get cut um altogether. The other reason why sometimes we may cut, not cut the baseball softball field as short as somebody will want it is because they don't have irrigation. If you start cutting these fields during hot times, they're gonna burn out, so sometimes we like to keep them a little higher. And it may not be ideal for um a youth game, but i- it it's definitely gonna protect us so we're not burning out areas and wearing areas through. Um so we do try to cut uh twice a week on Tuesdays and Fridays, um the new mower is definitely helping out. But it has its limitations around the building and so forth, so it's definitely field um spread out, field based. We do use other mowers that have baggers, so we're bagging, we're bagging the new Pond Street field. Uh and I put a picture up there, I think it's absolutely beautiful, uh but it it it's sometimes we cut it in a diamond shape, so it's um definitely a nice field. And the DPW and the groundskeeper are working together to try to stay on top of things, but I think that sometimes. Things get in the way.
Dave, if you could talk a little bit about allocation of your staff, I think people raise concerns, members of the board have raised concerns in regard to. The consolidation of DPW with maintenance, uh and has has that affected our current field situation? So I'll I'll take your opinion on that and then I'll give my opinion on that.
Uh so through when the uh previous groundskeeper left, through the consolidation, it was determined that we would hire the. Groundskeeper, um field specialist into the the operations and maintenance um department, which is the former DPW. Um so he worked over there and in the winter, yes, he was over there when there was really no outside work to be done. Soon as this spring, soon as he was able to um do anything on the grounds, he has moved over to the grounds at the middle high school. And has been over there. Now, he will also have to take on duties at the elementary school um between him and the DPW staff. What I've done through the consolidation is. Through the purchase of a a a wide cut mower, um we're mo- mowing more town fields. Jim, um who is our groundskeeper at the high school, has stayed there and I've had another staff take that mower. Um and they've mowed Purchase Street fields, that will also mow the elementary school fields when those are online. So we're we're trying to utilize what we have for um our personnel as effectively as possible.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't think that any issues that have come up this year are a direct result of the consolidation of. Maintenance and DPW's operations and maintenance on the town side, there's, there is a groundskeeper at the middle high school every day. And in the past, there was a groundskeeper at the middle high school every day. The availability of personnel has not changed. The the community needs to know that, cause I think people are making statements that it has changed, but that's not the reality, it has not changed.
And one of the challenges, um it's a big site, we didn't have a groundskeeper. For a good part of the spring of last year. And I was helping out as best I can between cutting the grass and lining the fields. And I could just tell you that if you're doing it by yourself, cutting the grass and lining the fields can take a tremendous amount of time with one person trying to manage that. So um you know, in a perfect world, it'd be nice to have two people over there managing the the site, it not always. But you know, when we have to get ready for two baseball games, a softball game and still manage to cut the grass. It's it's hard to accomplish all that on your own. You know, this was a a difficult spring for many reasons. Anybody that has to schedule athletic contests outside when it rains for five straight days um is is challenging. But then you have to then dump the schedule onto the groundskeeper, so he is prepping, we played five or six games in a row. At the school for softball, baseball, so he's prepping for that, which takes time, then he has to stay on top of cutting the grass. And it has to be done in a, you know, a forty-hour week, Monday through Friday, because again, we don't have a lot of resources. To then dump another eight hours of overtime and so forth, so there are challenges like any other job. And that sometimes when it rains out in the world outside of landscaping and and so forth, it's tough to catch up with games and activities and so forth. So there is a groundskeeper there, um he is, he he is there basically to help manage the site. But he's also there to prep games and get things ready for us and those things take time.
You know, so obviously, um going back before we get to questions, I think, you know, my overall position is, as I said. I think in two years, we're gonna just be in a much better place than we currently are in terms of field availability and field usage. District wide with the new fields coming on, the new complex, uh there's some great things happening. Obviously, as a committee, we're gonna have to look at, uh this wasn't a formal budget request, but in essence, they're saying to us, we need to increase our maintenance budget. If we wanna maintain these fields properly, uh the committee will have to make a decision going into our FY twenty budget to allocate more money to grounds and maintenance. Cause the reality is those needs have changed, those costs have changed and we haven't had the amount of allocation to. Have a regular uh field maintenance plan in terms of field fertilization. And obviously, I do think there is a goal uh from myself, uh from them. And from the, I think from the committee is gonna be to say, if we're bringing all these fields online, we need to maintain them, we need to have these fields available to the community. So that's gonna be a budget allocation, that's gonna be style, in essence, asking for a double of what their maintenance budget is. Uh so that's something the consi- the committee's gonna have to take into consideration as we go into next year's budget season.
Down to that, there's a lot gonna be going on, I think we have both short-term items that we can mention and long-term items, especially the irrigation on the. Softball and baseball fields, really putting fertilization down is almost useless unless you get. Um so until you have that, those will not be pristine, um that's just reality of what we're dealing with right now. For short-term funding solutions though, we have been working on looking at changing our fee structure for outside and um. Outside both in carver and outside the department, not in carver, but outside organization use of our fields that we'll be bringing to you guys in August. Uh looking for your approval to help bring funding in for us.
And also the new building as well, so really, what we're gonna be looking to overall, a total fee structure for the new facility, the fields. And that's gonna, that will be a budget offset that will assist us in meeting the needs that we need budgetarily to maintain these fields.
And and these figures we spoke of were for the middle high school property. Understand that when the elementary school is completed, that's gonna be six U soccer fields. And two softball fields, which are gonna be fully irrigated, um so we will need to fertilize them on a regular basis, which. So we will need to fertilize them on a regular basis, which if you remember the two old softball fields, um those. You know, weren't, and they were much smaller and were not um maintained the way we're going to maintain the new ones. So that's that's gonna come in a cost.
The other thing is, I, you know, to properly maintain a baseball softball field, you typically have to drop. Some stone dust and clay down each year, I mean, I my budget for outside materials for in the athletic department. For field maintenance is about thirty-five hundred dollars, I believe, and that we spend almost all of that in paint. And other equipment that we need just to get up and running. So, you know, we tip, we just put new clay down there, twenty yards of clay, it was almost eight eight hundred to a thousand dollars worth of clay on those fields. Which is what you really should do each year to sort of refresh the clay, turn it over, rake it out and so forth, if you don't, the result is you get weeds growing through. And it's really hard to manage. It's dry out there, the wind blows, the dust flies, um you know, our maintenance budget for those fields is limited and again, we go to. I go to booster clubs for resources and um donations, so these are all things that we really need to put together um. A more comprehensive maintenance plan, which is gonna require some significant funding.
And that's still long term, I mean, short term, if on an ongoing basis of shutting down the fields, I know that's gonna create a problem with all of our youth organizations that wanna utilize the fields. But in order to keep them a little bit better than what they are right now, you kinda have to do it, I go back to remember the first history lesson I ever learned was. When people planted crops, they rotated them every three or four years just to keep the soil up to speed. Um, and when you overuse these fields, it just gets broken down, um so again, it it as much as it may be shuffling tighter timelines on the youth organization. It may make them say, I'm more gonna use this field two to four, rather than the two to six window that they actually sign up for. Especially if we'll implement fees on that, that will charge them for the use, um and hold them accountable for that. And that's something that we're hopeful to do through the fees, is actually charge these organizations and um really the safety aspect of that too. Of having someone in the buildings to let them in the building, um rather than the key card system we have right now that um. Get rid of as we enter a new elementary building and implemented at the new uh at the at the high school, at the high school as well.
Let's not go, let's not go too far with the fee structure yet until we.
We haven't proposed any changes to fees tonight, the committee's not looking at changes to fees tonight. Uh, we are gonna, there, we'll have the policy subcommittee meet, we will go over fees, we'll review that with that group, we'll have that group bring it back to the full committee. So we'll, we will go through that process.
I would rather if you don't mind. I think I was gonna say, you know, we can ask questions, which we can, but I I think, I don't know how you'd have one, they seem to have answered just about everything.
Could we ask one? Well, I just think we can, we can open up this way, are you currently, you said all these organizations that are using the field, I was there on Sunday, there probably was. Five different groups, are you receiving money from these people currently?
One group, the Bay State Games baseball group has rented the facility for like three practices. And they're being charged the appropriate fee according to our fee structure where there's just like fifty dollars an hour. But they're, none of the flag football, none of the youth soccer.
Cause right now, our current policy is if you're a nonprofit town organization, you do not pay a fee to use the facilities.
Yeah, it goes back to every, every field's different, every use.
Right, go, we gotta look at gym, you might have to have security, there's all different specifics, but general concept of the policy is if you're a nonprofit. Town organization, you do not pay to use the facility, you don't pay a facility charge to rent the space. You might have to pay a custodial charge, you might have to pay a security charge, but you're not paying a rental fee.
Now, Mike and Dave, you guys might.
Now, we might have a di- we might propose a different policy.
See, I only know what happens here, like in a Plymouth or uh Mike from Duckbury, like what happens? In those towns as far as if that, if if you are the Plymouth uh U ten boy soccer team. Are you able in those towns to use a high school facility or you get?
I I I, but I think, yeah, I would think we should not discuss other committees' policies.
I would still rather wait for the funding. To occur when we're ready for that discussion, cause I don't think that's what this is about.
Can I ask about the athletic complex timeline, can I discuss that or no? Is that okay? I'm moving down the list, so the timeline, you have ten four. I've been telling people can't wait for the Thanksgiving Day football game, so obviously much different. You're ten four, are you basing your schedule for the fall sports on a ten four that will be having home games?
So, the ten four, my understanding is that the turf will be done and the complex will be usable. But I'm not sure everything around it will be completely done, so landscaping trees and so forth. Am I planning my my fall schedule, my fall schedule for the most part is is um going to be using the other fields. With the intent that maybe late October, I could do some sort of grand opening with a. Mul- multi-sport weekend, whether it be a field hockey game, two soccers and a football, uh all depending on our schedule, I believe um. We have two home games in the fall for football, which would be the one that be impacted the most would be the football team at this point, cause I can put other teams other places. There are two home games in September, which will go to a different site and then um the next home game, I believe, is mid-October for them. So that would be my goal, would be like a homecoming grand opening type deal mid-October, but if it doesn't happen, I will not, the schedule will not be impacted. We've made other plans.
I didn't, I didn't wanna interrupt during your thing, cause it was really good, and that's why I was just going down the list now, is that okay? As far as. Uh, this isn't a fee question, so as far as uh. Far as, like you had said, we're not using Pond Street one field right now. I could go take twelve kids up to Pond Street one field and go play right now, no one's really stopping me.
They do that.
I know, I know they do, that's why I'm just, so all I'm saying is, the hope is that people with that are gonna. Just figure we're not using that field, right, I mean. Is it is it considered trespass, are we, what are we trying?
So there's a sign on on uh most of our fields, I believe on all of the fields, that say per, use per school committee approval. There are people that don't look at the signs and they will use it, I've had people call me at random hours of the evening and afternoon to say people are on this field, what should I do? Um, again, I think, you know, w- we try to make it obvious that fields are shut by roping them off or putting up signs. I mean, I thought it was obvious that we had broken ground on the track field, but people were walking on it one afternoon and they actually played a flag football game. When there was construction going on, so um I guess I can't control that, we're gonna put, we are gonna get new signs. Everything does already say per school committee approval. I mean, the only, the only um recourse that that school committee or the the school would have is that there is, there is a group that is not following the policy. So for example, I approve flag football to use uh the practice football field only. And we show up and they're on that new field playing, the only recourse you would have would be to terminate their permit or their approval to use the field. I don't think you wanna do that, but I don't know what other recourse you have other than a fine or and so forth, I don't, that's up to school committee policy.
And and I agree, I I think that, but to 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 go back to the the fee discussion being a different discussion. That's a policy discussion that I think if we're looking at it, meeting this summer again, to add to that policy and make sure our policies are clear, if that's our goal this summer.
And we're actually trying to outline that.
Right, so that's something we can add to that conversation as opposed to something we're not really gonna solve right now, but it's a very, very good point.
I mean, our biggest concern would be if you had an organized group going onto a space, whether it's, we're trying to establish or it's an established space that. They are not authorized to be on, I mean, if a mom or a dad goes with a couple kids and kicks a soccer ball around or hits a baseball around. In the grand scheme of things, they're not hurting anything, all in it is public space.
But you're talking organizational.
Yeah, organizations and, you know, knowingly going on there and and not following the proper protocols, those are the ones we're gonna try to limit.
Right, major more impact.
I mean, I think ultimately you would hope that the community would respect. What we're trying to do and the request of what we're trying to do and if there's a space that's closed, you would hope. That they would honor that and not use it, we would also hope that when they use our facilities, we, I talked about this. Quite a big site, learn a new term, but return to neutral, that if the soccer fields are gonna be used and you're putting soccer nets out, then put them back where you were and don't just leave them out. So there's a, there's a level of like responsibility of the community to help us out and make sure these facilities are clean and put back the way they were used. You know, and and when the turf is open and running, we're not gonna charge a family of three to go kick the ball around, it's not what we're looking to do, I mean, our community does it all the time. But when an organization comes in and picks up and starts practicing, there's gotta be some sort of.
And that becomes our responsibility to clearly communicate to those groups what their, what the expectations.
The accountability is.
And usually the board, the board members that I deal with, so I had an incident a- at flag football on on Sunday morning. Uh, and I went to a board member and said, this is, something's going on here, could you help me out, and they're responsive, cause they know that that, you know. In some ways that we're giving them a facility to use, it's their community space, but they also wanna protect it, so the board members that we deal with, with the boards that are in there. Are very responsive to our requests and things that we need, but. The only thing that we can say, and the only thing we can do is that we we ask people to respect the space that they're given, we ask them to respect any areas that are off limits. Um, and as a community, you know, sort of support each other in doing that.
Do you, do you have a timeframe uh of when you're looking at new signage?
It'll be part of the um the completion of the project, I mean, we.
As far as the new track and field, that area will have new signage and then we can always add on additional signage to any other field.
Cause I guess my question would be if we do policy refinement and we come up with something, we wanna make sure that that statement and that understanding is clear.
I forget how it's, it it there is, there is definitely clear mention that fields can only be used based on school committee approval. There's another line to the sign, I believe.
Prior field usage um required per school committee policy, I believe is the exact wordage. And and just so you're all clear, um the Pond Street soccer field to the upper field. Um, that is going to be closed for a probably, I think, three years was. The football field had about fifteen inches of room on it, um which is part of the reason why it never drained good. Um, it was too thick for drainage, so we ended up with through this project about six thousand cubic yards of excess material. That had to be put somewhere, um because if we hauled it offsite, it became very expensive. Um, so looking, when we were looking at the original project, what can we do with it? Um, so Mike and I talked about it and and Scott and other people and we're putting it on the upper soccer field. Um, and it's right now, they're still hauling there because they're still cutting out the banks around, cause the the field is widening. Um, some of that gravel, they're actually repurposing as a base because it's not as gloomy. It's it passed the sieve test, so they're repurposing in into the field as a base, um but basically, we have a a large stockpile of room. On that uh upper soccer field. Um, through this project, they ha- they are reusing some of it, which they are screening, um we are paying for them to screen all of it. Um, and they're relocating it more towards the Rocky's Way Road, um but that field won't be usable, part of it will be, gym classes can use it, but it won't be able to. Be used as a regulation sized soccer field, um but the export costs, if we would export that offsite, would have been. Uh, quite high and it's room we can use anywhere in in town or the schools.
We'll use that to do the, when we do the football, the practice football field level, we're gonna have to re-level that whole thing. So we use that and we're gonna use.
So it's just gonna be stored up there for now.
For for a period of time till we can use it all up, but yeah.
Okay, I have a question about that, cause I've heard people are dirt biking up there. And riding uh ATVs and things other, I I mean, I know we had an issue not that long ago. Um, is, have you guys thought about, I don't know, signage or fencing or anything?
Put signage up there, they were, the general contractor is still hauling up there, um they need access to it on a daily basis. Um, we can certainly put signage and I can mention to the police that they send a, you know, obviously they can't park someone there. But they could do drive-bys, do patrols, um and and hopefully.
Yeah, there's a lot of, there's a, there's at least three or four point of entries on those fields. And um I don't think we could put any type of pole and fence. They could really get injured, um I've ch- I personally have chased.
I'm sure I.
So I don't know, I don't know how to prevent that, other than again, you just hope that the community would respect the spaces that we have, I mean, we had some damage. We've worked, um, we did work with the person involved in the damage and they're going to be doing some hydro seeding for us. We just haven't been able to secure the area, so the softball field we patched in, it's kinda growing in. There are other areas on the complex that we wanna use that that resource of hydro seeding, um which is a section of Pond Street, so that we have met with them. We have, they have agreed to a certain amount of reimbursement for us through resources, and that will happen in the next week or so.
That's right, yeah, I just, I had some, I was approached by a couple of parents over the weekend that said, hey, I'm so, so.
Yeah, yeah, fencing would be. Very cost prohibitive also.
And the reality is we use those trails for cross-country, so. I mean, it's something we could explore, I wouldn't consider any type of chaining and stuff like that.
I'm certainly not an expert, but I just, I just know that there's some use up there that probably shouldn't be happening, so, thank you.
Does anyone have any other question? Any other questions for David or Mike at all?
I have one, just one quick one, going back to the beginning of your talk, the, you were concerned about the new gym floor and. Someone not cleaning it the way it's recommended, were you talking about school staff doing this, custodians or?
No, I think, I think that the the the, some of the can, the thoughts of the community is that we're not making an effort to clean this floor. And I think a lot of outside groups that come in, expect it to be spotless and free of any debris or marks or whatever. And I think they're very quick to say, you know, why don't you just throw a mop on it and scrub it down and wash it? And the reality is, is that what we're hearing from the manufacturer and the warranty people is if you put water on this thing and you scrub it with a mop and a bucket or run one of those machines on it. They're gonna void your warranty and it's not ready to do that, so I've had many people say that they are at a school, they work at a school and every day they see the guy go in there and drive around and do it. We're being told not to do that, so the only other resources we have would be to do the microfiber sort of wipes and wash through it. Sometimes we can spot, spot wash a soda spill or whatever, but to put a mop and bucket on that daily and scrub it down would be. Um, detrimental to.
People are suggesting.
So we don't want them doing it on their own, on their own when no one else is there.
No, just like cutting the lawn, you shouldn't just show up with your mop and bucket and and start scrubbing the floor.
Can that be something that's just kinda put in writing to these people before they rent them, before they go in there and say. You have to sign off saying you agree to this, don't do this, you know, or you're not gonna be invited back.
That that ties into the policy.
Facility policies, which again will be.
It's gonna be a busy policy meeting.
Could definitely be more involved, um and again, it's a matter of managing that, how how do you manage that when. You know, it's gonna have to be a custodian or or a security person that's managing it, I will say that there are a lot of outside groups that use it for the basketball season. And they do a really, they spend a lot of time standing by the door trying to prevent anything from food and water getting in, but people walk in with Gatorade and coffee and ultimately. Um, and then sometimes people just use it and don't know, we had a group use it recently and put a bunch of tape down on the floor, which is now staining, so it's got some marks, so we gotta kinda. Clean that up a little bit, but you know, I I don't think any of it's intentional, it just adds to the, to the wear and tear of the facility and the and the floor.
And we have a new uh wood floor in the elementary school.
Wanna, and I think that's the point, David, and we, every, there's a lot of new we're talking about right now, so we have to. Look at these policies and we're gonna have to, it's to take Ruby's analogy, we need to look at little steps and we need to prioritize what. Is most important to get us moving forward in the best way, cause there's no way we're gonna be able to cover everything we need to do with what we need to update.
Well, it's important to take steps, like you said, to need, to protect these facilities. Land space with a lot of money into it, so we gotta protect them.
Right, and we, that's a we collectively, like, obviously the use that the athletes at our building and the kids in our building are doing, but also the community's in there doing it too. So we all have to sort of be invested in making an extra step, so that when you're coming in on a snowy day and it's a Saturday morning, that we're we're being. These people that are renting and using the space are being proactive to put mats down and make sure that we're helping as well, you know, there's a lot of little things we can all do. Um, clearly, you know, we're gonna continue to do our part as best we can, but the support of the community is is helpful in those.
But I think with policy, we create clear expectation and we make sure that's communicated well and that that sort of helps change things, yeah, yeah. Accountability. Thank you guys very much, appreciate it a lot.
Yeah, moving on, moving on. Hopefully, we have some quicker topics. District end of the F-FY seventeen financial report, so a couple months ago, Powers and Sullivan performed. Uh, the procedures and audit specified by Desi to review the school district's end of the year financial report. For the year ending on June thirtieth, two thousand seventeen, so this is last year's end of the year financial report. Um, and just wanted to highlight and thank Brad, uh because ultimately, Powers and Sullivan found no instances of non-compliance with agreed-upon procedures. And had no specific recommendations on how the district could improve its financial management. Uh, it's unusual in in any. Uh it's unusual in in any kind of audit report to have uh no instances of no co- non-compliance and have no recommendations, they had zero recommendations for us. Uh so I'd just like to take a moment to publicly thank Brad for his work, uh in terms of uh overseeing the financial procedures uh of the Cal Republic Schools. Uh so thank you for Brad, for your great work, uh and uh we we were excited to have that report and share with the committee, you have a copy of it in your background. Uh and I'll open it up to uh any comments from the committee.
He tried to, he tried to shrug this off at our last meeting, it's not really.
It doesn't get any better from here, that's the problem.
But it, but noticeably, Brad, we've gone through quite a bit eh eh over the past few years here and and to to get something like that and to hear something like that is. Is maybe more impacting for us than it is for you, but it is definitely an impacting piece to hear and and. Uh to attribute it to a lot of the hard work that you've been doing since you came in, man.
And this, this report, as much as I get all the majority of the credit for it, it's, it goes well beyond me, it starts from my two assistants in my office. All the way to town hall, because there's a lot of information that feeds into this report that I rely on other people to the day-to-day stuff that I just take and go through and so. By all means, this is well beyond just me, it's from the town and the school, um community work together.
Well, and.
It's not really him, is what he's saying.
They're, they're a pretty good duo together, I think, not too bad.
I think it's important for the community to to see this, that's why I think we wanted to push this. Um in spite of Brad's re- uh objection, but I think it's terrific.
He's just being shy.
I agree, thank you very much.
You can't tell a red's face is, just for sure.
Alright, um class of two thousand eighteen, future plans. Um in last couple of years, I've, I've done this after graduation, uh so it attaches an overview of the future plans of the class of two thousand eighteen. Uh the overview includes what schools the students are, the graduating class were accepted to, plan on attending. And the percentage of students attending four-year colleges, universities, two-year college universities, join the military, join the workforce. I'm not gonna read to the community all the colleges students were accepted to, uh but there's a large list, but I will do the general percentages. Uh so the class of two thousand eighteen, um we have seventy percent that will be attending a four-year public or private university. We have twenty-one percent that will be attending a two-year school, uh we have two percent going into the military. Uh one percent going to a trade school, uh and six percent going to the workforce. So overall, that'd be uh seventy percent to four-year schools, twenty-one percent two-year schools, nine percent military, trade or workforce. Uh and just wanted to share that information with the committee and also let the committee see uh the range of schools. Uh Meredith has it up on the board, I don't know if we can get a close-up on that for TV, it turned, I thought it was scrolled out a little bit. Just the the list of the range of schools our students were uh accepted to and plan on attending from the class of two thousand and eighteen. So it's always good to share that with the community.
Academically based, that's fantastic, civilly based, civically based, uh two percent, huh?
Uh uh any questions on future plans?
Great.
Okay, uh we have two items remaining. Uh recreation committee reappointments. Uh so Mary Ross and Kyle Miller have both expressed interest in staying on as members of the recreation committee. Uh Mary's been on the committee for many years, as you all know, uh Kyle was recently appointed by this group uh in the spring. Uh and he was filling out the term, uh so now he needs to be reappointed. Uh we did, so these are the only two people who demonstrated interest in joining the recreation committee. Uh we invited them both here this evening, uh but since, since they knew that they uh in essence were maybe unopposed. That that we have two spots and there were two candidates, uh they said they absolutely wanna be. Uh on the recreation committee, but uh they decided not to attend this evening, though if they did attend, maybe we would have moved it up to the agenda.
I was gonna say, did you tell them where they were in the agenda?
So, but we do need a uh, we do need a motion to vote, uh if the committee so wills, uh to appoint Mary Ross and Kyle Miller to the recreation.
Uh does the motion separate them or?
Can be, can be put together.
You can put it together.
I'll make a motion to um to put uh Mary Ross and Carl Miller on the recreation committee's reappointments.
I'd take a second. Motion made in second, any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Good.
Aye? Unanimous?
And in the last piece, James, I will share your, I will share my computer with you. Since you should probably take the lead on this.
I should probably take the lead on this one.
This would be the superintendent's contract renewal. Um so we have had our discussions and meetings, everybody seems to be on board, so. To make it brief, I'll accept the motion with what's written.
I'll make a motion, I move that we ratify a five-year contract for the superintendent of schools. That replaces the existing contract effect, effective July first, two thousand eighteen. The salary rank increases that are established are one percent for FY nineteen, a zero percent for FY twenty. A one percent for FY twenty-one, zero percent for FY twenty-two, and a one percent for FY twenty-three.
Motion made in second, any comments, questions?
I would say that I feel very lucky um to know that my kid, my my two boys will be in the district that you'll be running. Um I've, I speak extremely highly of you and you know that, and uh I was uh very impressed with the whole process and I know that you're. Um you're a fore-carver and and that means a lot, so uh I look forward to working with you.
I would, I would second that motion and um. All those in favor of ratifying this contract, say aye?
Aye.
Is this a roll call? No, okay, aye?
Aye.
Unanimous?
And so, uh and I would just like to comment on that in terms of, you know, uh. As I always say, I take great pride in this school district, I take great pride in the Cal community, uh it's a pleasure that I serve at the will of the committee. Uh and I wanna be here and I'm excited about having the opportunity to be here uh for the next five years, uh and and to continue to serve the students. Uh the families and the teachers and staff and the administration of the Cal Public Schools, uh so thank you to the committee.
Do this again in five years.
Thank you.
Thank you, Scott, alright.
I think that's it.
That is it, uh reports from the school committee, everybody okay for today?
I had something I wanted to report.
Please do.
The um fifth and sixth grade softball girls team won the championship tonight, three to against Halifax, so it was very exciting.
Oh. That's awesome.
I went to the game for a little while before I came to the meeting, I had to cut out, but they won, that's a big, big accomplishment for them, so congrats. Um I'm not, that I'm not sure of. I heard, I I was told that we never beat them before, so this is hu- this is huge that we actually won against them, so. Just wanted to say congrats to them.
Yeah.
Um and to all of our sports teams that have been having a great season and um to ask people to please go out. We do talk about inviting the community and wanting the community to be more involved in the district, so. The concerts that we have and the sporting events, they really are for everyone. Um and the music, the music boosters and the the athletic boosters do a great job of publishing the schedules on Facebook and and. Getting information out there, so there was a really good crowd there when I was there early tonight, I didn't wanna leave, but I did. Um so I just wanted to mention that to people to continue to come out and support our students, so, thank you.
I don't have much to add except for just to say have a safe and fun rest of your summer.
I would, I would agree with that, a happy summer, yeah, this coming soon.
Yes, happy end of summer days. Yeah.
I'd also like to thank the music boosters, uh we spent a week of music this week and it was such a fantastic show, the students in this town and the and the. The support that they get, it was just such an incredible job from everybody.
I think, uh, don't they have a instrument drive going on right now?
They do.
Yes, they do.
I, sorry, on one of the Facebook pages.
If they're trying to get some instruments, anybody turn in old instruments.
Okay. I think you check the Carver Facebook pages, they they post on there.
Yeah, the boosters are, yep.
Uh, yes, um the Carver Farmers Market started up again, it opened yesterday for the season, so that's nice.
Excellent. I will accept the motion.
I will make a motion to adjourn to executive session to conduct strategy in preparation for negotiation and to not return.
Second.
Motion made in second, and roll call those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous? Meeting is adjourned.